Good evening. We're calling the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for March 14th to order. If I could get everybody to rise, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. City Planner, would you do the roll call, please?
Chairman Rosales.
Here.
Commissioner Bauma.
President.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Hayes.
Here.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Chair.
Thank you. Staff, any communications for matters not on tonight's agenda?
We have not received any requests to speak on matters that are not on the agenda, Chair Rosales.
Great, thank you. We'll go to approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was way back in December, December 13th. Approval of minutes. Any questions, comments by commissioners? Seeing none, are we using our screen for approvals tonight? It's working, right?
That's a good question, yes. You can use your screens to vote. I just got to figure out how to do it on our end here.
Yeah, if we get a commissioner to make a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 13th.
We have a motion, Vice Chair Morrissey, second. Second, Commissioner Custer. See our screen. While we figure it out, let's do a roll call. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Vice Chair Morrissey and Commissioner Bauma. So, all yeses on those. City Planner?
Let the record show that the votes, 5-0, to approve the minutes for the meeting on December 13th.
Thank you. I see we don't have anything on our consent calendar tonight, nor transportation items. So, we'll go to public hearings. For those watching on TV and in the audience tonight, we have a very full agenda, but let me point out a couple of items that are being continued. So, if you're here for item seven, that item is being continued to the meeting on March 28th. That would be consideration of a South Pacific Street vetment repairs. Again, March 28th on that. And then, item 11 is consideration of a recommendation to the City Council for a general plan amendment. That, too, is being continued to March 28th. Item 12, regular coastal permit for 1727 South Pacific Street remodel. That is also being continued to March 28th. And then, the last item is consideration of recommendation for a zone amendment to the City Council. That is also being, that's item 13, also continued to March 28th. So, with that being said, we will move then to the first public hearing item, which is item four. Consideration of a regular coastal permit to allow a staircase and landing addition to a rear yard located at 25 St. Mallow. The applicant is Franklin Otis Booth. Disclosures. I'll start. I know this item came to the planning commission, oh, some time ago. I want to say last summer, and we did not...
July.
July? I believe we had a presentation at that point, and then it was continued, and it's coming back to us now in March. Commissioner Custer?
I drove by in July, and I've reread the reports and everything that we have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
Same. Reviewed the reports, went through the facility, well, kind of walked through and tried to see it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey?
Same.
And Commissioner Bauma?
Same.
Thank you. Good evening, Sergio. It looks like your presentation denied on this item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Rosales, and members of the planning commission. The item before you is previously described as a request for a small staircase/landing addition at 25 St. Mallow. Just by way of reference, project sites located within the St. Mallow gated community on the south end of town. The graphic on the overhead depicts its location within the St. Mallow community. Tonight, the applicant, you're being asked to consider a request for a 40-square-foot exterior staircase addition. The reason it's coming for this body tonight is because the site is located within the appeal jurisdiction of the coastal zone, and any improvements to those residences require approval of a regular coastal permit. By way of background, this site came to this body back in their meeting of July 12th, I believe it was, in 2021. At that time, the request was a little different than what it is today. At the time, they were requesting a variance in addition to a regular coastal permit approval for a larger exterior deck addition that would have encroached further into the rear yard outside of the existing encroachment. And so, tonight, the item you're being asked to consider is a small staircase addition that completely conforms to the zoning ordinance and the development standards of the R1 Zone in which the site is located in. The graphic on the overhead here shows the site plan, and in a blow-up of the site plan that shows existing site conditions. You'll note that the southwest corner, or I believe it's the southwest corner, the quarter on the bottom left of the screen shows an existing encroachment. Other than that, the existing residence conforms to all the applicable zoning code requirements. This graphic depicts the proposed addition. The proposed staircase is outlined in orange, and it has a bubble around it. It's really only intended to connect this existing upper deck to an existing lower terrace at the ground level. Here's elevation that shows it from the east. You see a small protrusion, all within the setback envelope. That's for permissible setbacks for the pertinences such as decks. And here's west elevation of the proposed staircase addition. Here's elevation from the south. The project is consistent with the local coastal program in that it's compatible with its surrounding neighborhoods. It complies with all the applicable development standards of the R1 Zone. With that, staff recommends issuance of a Class III categorical exemption for existing or new construction and conversion of small structures, and to adopt a planning commission resolution approving the project. That concludes my staff report. I'll be available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sergio. Any questions for staff? Don't see any. Is the applicant present? Does the applicant want to do a presentation?
The applicant's representative is present, and they're here to answer any questions may they arise.
Who would the representative be, if we could see a hand? Thank you. Sir, you want to come forward and do a presentation, or answer any questions? It's your few minutes. Go ahead.
I know you're busy night tonight. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Thomas Noonan. I live at 924 Daisy Avenue in Carlsbad. I'm here to represent Franklin Booth and Debbie Booth, the owners of the property. Also, the architect, Denise Tomlin, who drew the plans. Unfortunately, she's not feeling well tonight and can't make the meeting. So, I'm a builder. I've been working on that project, and I will be building the deck. So, if you have any questions about it, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? The applicant's rep? Don't see any. This is a public hearing, so, thank you, sir. So, audience, you're invited to provide comment or input on this project. You'd have three minutes to do so. Okay. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for consideration. As City Planner indicated, as opposed to when this came to us in July, this doubt now does conform with the standards that we were wrestling with back in July, and so, pleased with that. I think it makes it pretty straightforward, but I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion then. I'd like to make a motion to confirm issuance of a Class III categorical exemption for new construction or conversion, and adopt planning commission resolutions number 2021-P18, approving regular coastal permit RC21, one, to allow a staircase and landing addition in the rear yard to connect existing upper and lower decks. And thank you so much for your patience with this. I know it's been a long process for this applicant, and good luck with your construction on the small staircase.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Bauma, and a second by Vice Chair Morrissey. Any further discussion? If not, it looks like tonight we'll be doing roll call approvals. Planner? Okay. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauma?
Yes.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. City Planner?
Let the record show that the vote is 5-0 in favor of the project.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to the next item. Item five is consideration of conditional use permit to allow the potential storage of roughly 20,000 gallons of corrosive liquids and oxidizing materials located at 4630 North Avenue. The applicant is Chem Station Pacific LLC. Disclosures. I know we got quite a few emails. I did speak to the applicant or applicant's representative. What else? And I'm familiar with the site. Went by there, so, Commissioner Custer?
I went, looked at the site, read the emails, and read the reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
Same.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Same.
And Commissioner Bauma?
To add to that, I did speak to the applicant. Everything else is the same.
Great, thank you. Presentation by staff. I presume you are Mr. Thompson?
That is correct.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dane Thompson, and I'm here to present Agenda Item Five tonight, the Chem Station Pacific project. The subject site is 4630 North Avenue, just south of Vista Pacific Drive. It's a two-acre site within the limited industrial zone in the Peacock neighborhood. The site is surrounded by other light industrial uses to the northwest and east, with the residential area to the south. Just to the north of the site is a tributary that feeds into the Loma Alta Creek. The area was developed in accordance to the Vista Pacific master plan, which created landscape buffers to separate the industrial sites from the residential area. The surrounding land uses include various manufacturing and distribution facilities typical of an industrial area. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing 26,000-square-foot building. The proposed use is for a company that sells cleaning supplies, including concentrated detergents and sanitizers, mostly to food processing and packaging facilities. This conditional use permit is to allow for not more than 19,780 gallons of corrosive liquids and 1,100 gallons of oxidizing materials. Article 30, Section 3026 of the zoning ordinance requires that any project involving the storage of more than 120 gallons of corrosive materials and 1,000 pounds of oxidizing materials receive an approved conditional use permit prior to operation to make sure the project meets all codes and is taking all necessary safety precautions. Here is the site plan for the project. The applicant is proposing to use the small outdoor area in the top-left corner for outdoor storage and the gray area for indoor operations. Here is a visual for the screening that will be provided at the site. There is existing landscaping on all sides, and a fence with screening materials will be provided in the rear. The building itself also screens the outdoor storage area from the street and residential This project is consistent with the general plan. As conditioned, the project will comply with the zoning ordinance, and the project is compatible with the surrounding land uses. The nearby residential zone is sufficiently buffered. The project provides adequate containment, and the outdoor area is screened from public Here is a visual showing the buffering between the subject site on the right and the residential area to the left. The residential area is located about 15 feet above the grade of the street, and the materials will be stored about 300 feet from the nearest residence. The project is proposing two levels of containment. One is necessary, the second is voluntary. The first level is sized to be able to contain a spill from largest container on-site, plus 20 minutes of fire sprinkler discharge. The second level can contain rainfall for 24 hours in a 25-year storm. Chem Station does not produce hazardous waste. The materials being stored on-site are water-based and readily biodegradable, though many are concentrated to the point of being classified as hazardous materials. There will be no open use of hazardous materials on-site. The business is subject to regular inspections by the fire department and our watershed protection team. The applicant agrees to take full responsibility in the event of a spill, and there will be no explosive materials, no toxic materials, or hazardous fumes or vapors at the project The applicant complied with the city's enhanced notification policy, which included three open houses at the subject site on November 30th, and then on March 5th and March 7th. Staff received six letters of support and 34 letters of opposition for this project. The main concern involved the impacts of the materials on the health of the residents. The project was reviewed by the subject matter experts in all relevant disciplines, including the fire department, as well as the environmental services and watershed protection program, and was determined to not have an adverse impact on the health and safety of nearby residents. Another common concern was the proximity to schools. There are no schools just within under a half-mile of the project site. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission by motion confirm issuance of categorical exemption per sequel guidelines Article 19, Section 15, 301, existing facilities, and adopt Resolution Number 2022-P01, approving conditional use permit CUP 21-00016, with the findings and conditions of approval attached there herein. This concludes my presentation. With that, I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well. He has a short presentation, and will also be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for staff? Not at this time, thank you. We may call you up for something else later on. I understand the applicant is here, the representative. If you'd like to come forward and give us a presentation, please give us your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dario Paduano. I'm the founder of Chem Station Pacific and the general manager. Chem Station Pacific distributes cleaning detergents and sanitizers primarily used for sanitizing food and beverage manufacturing facilities. As you can see in our logo, our vision statement is refill, not landfill. Just want to tell you a little bit about that. What makes us unique is that we refill containers. Our competitors distribute these detergents in packages such as 55-gallon containers, plastic containers. By refilling containers, we're basically eliminating that plastic packaging from the landfill, hence our vision statement of refill, not landfill. I'll tell you guys a little bit more about that, but by eliminating that packaging, we're also eliminating the need for a lot of water rinsing of those containers prior to disposal. Chem Station is a franchise network, started in 1977. There are 63 franchises throughout the country. The San Diego franchise is one of those franchises. It's owned and operated by my family. We live in North County, San Diego. We've been in business since 2014. We're currently in the Miramar area, and we're just looking to move north closer to home. We purchased the building at 4630 North Ave in 2021. The building was vacant for a few years, and we believe we can make a positive impact by occupying it and owning it. As I thought about how I tell you guys and the audience here about my business, oftentimes my customers are better at that than I am. So, I reached out to some of my customers to get some letters. Unfortunately, none of them can make it here today. But the customers I'm going to share with you here today are all within probably less than a mile from my building. I serve a lot of Oceanside clients. First one's a brewery in the Oceanside area. I'm not going to read each letter to you, but basically what I've done is just highlighted some themes that you'll find consistent throughout these letters. Some of the themes that you'll find is that we're helping them be more environmentally friendly by eliminating the packaging. They like our refillable, reusable packaging, not only for the environmental benefit, but it's also more convenient and safe for their employees. Here's another brewery that is literally in the project that our building is located in. Same thing, they harp on the environmentally friendly business model that we provide. In this case, they also were a client that we helped with their organic certification. So, we're consultants in a lot of cases to our clients, helping them with their certifications and to make sure that their food is high-quality and safe for consumers. This is actually a design firm, also located in San Diego. We've just partnered with them a couple times just as a consultant. They've used our expertise when it comes to handling hazardous materials. Lastly, this is just a letter here from a gentleman named Andrew Benny that, up until January, shared his office, or shared my office. We basically shared the current facility that I'm in right now in Miramar for four years. He just wrote a nice letter saying he's never had any issues with our process, with our materials. There's never been any odors, no smells, and he brought his dog to work every day, and the dog was fine. A little bit about our business and our products. As was already mentioned, they're water-based, biodegradable, they're safe around food because that's our main client base. They're approved by the USDA and the FDA for food and manufacturing facilities, so these are used indoor. So, again, there's no real hazard to using them indoor or around food. We're an essential and critical component of the food supply. We make essential cleaning detergents environmentally sustainable, and during the pandemic, we were especially helpful to a lot of different companies and first responders with our sanitizers. We're a small company. There's five employees, not including myself. Three are warehouse staff, two are field technicians. We're all hazmat certified, we're SQF certified. That stands for Safe Quality Food. I'm an SQF practitioner, and that's how I gain, I guess, the means to consult food companies. And we're also organic food certified. We regularly consult our clients, not only on their processes, but also for safety and OSHA training. As Dane had mentioned, we had three open houses. A few of the folks that showed up are here today, and I really appreciate their time showing up to the open house and learning about our company. I think I've put a lot of their concerns aside, but I believe that a few folks still have a main concern, which I've summarized here. They're really just concerned with the impact on the environment and their health. And I consider my company an environmental company. I consider us to be really good stewards of the environment, and it's really critical to us doing business and gaining clients. So, I wanted to just address that myth really with a couple bullets. First is refill, not landfill. Definitely makes us an environmental steward. By refilling containers, we're eliminating approximately 350,000 plastic drums annually from the landfill, or the ocean. And that is amongst all 63 franchises. I can't take credit for all that myself. The reason why we're a franchise business is because we really require that local distribution in order to do what we do, which is refill. They're water-based. All of our products are water-based. We're actively replacing chlorinated solvents and synthetic detergents that are currently used in that park that we're located in. Matter of fact, the business that was located in the facility that we're looking to move into used those chlorinated solvents and had quite a few of those hazardous solvents on hand. Those are not biodegradable, and I suspect that's the reason why the building sat empty for a while, because it took a while for that, for those vapors to biodegrade. Safety data sheets on all our products have been made available to the public. Safety data sheets, or SDSs, are meant to highlight risks. So, when you read them, they're going to tell you about their risks. The worst-case scenario, if there's a spill. I'm not here to downplay the hazards. Corrosive materials are definitely something that could burn your skin. If you don't get it off your skin, within 20 minutes, you're going to get injured. You get it in your eyes, you can get injured almost immediately. But I would just like to say that if you read safety data sheets of other companies in industrial areas, you would see a lot of the same hazards, if not more. And because of this process, my business has had to have that transparency. But I just want to make everyone just think about, you know, what goes on in an industrial area. It's not the same thing that happens in residential areas. That's why they are industrial areas. We're USDA, FDA certified, organic certified. Some of the other concerns that I addressed during the open houses, I think are also addressed by this letter that I got from a consultant, Klos Bruckner &amp; Associates. This is a fire protection consultant that was recommended to me by the fire department here in Oceanside a few years ago when I first started my search. They're a premier fire consultant company here in the San Diego area. Their recommendations have been fully included in my architectural plans, which were reviewed by the city, all departments of the city, and was recently approved as well. I've asked them, I initially asked them if they could make it here. They couldn't time. So, in lieu of that, they wrote a letter where they addressed certain concerns. And I just highlighted a couple of things. I'm not going to read this letter to you. But on some of the noxious and toxic substances that folks think I might have on hand, I really believe that's a myth. There are no toxic substances, as this letter and this consultant expert says. Sodium hydroxide is not classified as a toxic liquid. They mention here that we are looking to build an H4 room. H stands for hazard, so H4, there's four different levels of hazards, one being the highest, 4 is the lowest. And I just highlight there are a couple of things that the H4 room requires to mitigate a risk of a spill. We're also pointing out that I'm using fully closed systems, meaning no vapors can escape into the atmosphere. Here, they talk about the secondary containment and what that requirement entails, and we can go through that in a little bit more detail if you have questions. Addressing flammables, there are no flambles in the building. I do have a little bit of flambles outdoor, and that's been a point of concern. One of the things that I think is very interesting here is they point out that a local Dun &amp; Edwards or Sherwin-Williams store or home a local Dun &amp; Edwards or Sherwin-Williams store or Home Depot or Lowe's is allowed 7,500 to 15,000 gallons of flammable liquids. And oftentimes you see those stores right next to residential areas. They're also pointing out the fact that oxidizers and corrosives can be stored together, but they need to be separated. And I'm meeting that requirement. We talk a lot about terms like corrosives, oxidizers. I figured, okay, maybe I'll just throw up some definitions here in case there's any confusion on what those mean. So all I'm doing is just defining what corrosive, oxidizer, what biodegradable means and what's relevant to the materials that I have on hand. So corrosive and oxidizers are relevant and all of my materials are readily biodegradable. I don't have any synthetic chemicals. Those last two definitions there, in the safety data sheets, you'll read about certain hazards and certain health effects. And they're oftentimes or always going to be defined as either acute or chronic. Acute means short-term essentially. Chronic means long-term. Acute is something that if you get hurt, you'll notice right away, oh, this burns. Chronic is, you know, you get cancer 10 years down the road. You didn't know you had that interaction with something hazardous. All of my materials have acute hazards, no chronic hazards. I would never be in that business myself or put my employees in that business. We have no toxic materials. There's going to be no fumes or vapors. There's no biohazard, no biohazards, no explosives. We do not generate hazardous waste. So in conclusion, our local nature is that, you know, we're a community partner dedicated to making a positive contribution. We work with local businesses, only local businesses. I only distribute throughout San Diego and Orange County. We have basically taken something that's very much necessary for modern society to be healthy and safe, and we've made it environmentally sustainable. We're experts in the chemical management and mitigation of risks. And our growth and safe operating track record, I think, is a testament to that dedication. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Go ahead.
We heard, thank you, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
We heard a lot from the surrounding neighborhood as far as opposition goes. Is there anybody in the park, in your industrial park, that has also felt that they didn't want you to be storing the amount of chemicals that you are or biodegradable?
There was one.
There was?
So some of those clients, one of those is in the park. There was another business, I don't know them, but they had a letter of opposition. Funny enough, they restore automobiles. So, I mean, you just think about the paint that they have on hand. And, you know, petroleum. I really wish that they had showed up to the open house because I think that easily changed that person's mind.
Thank you.
Looks like we're out of questions for the moment, but stand ready just in case we bring you back.
All right, thanks.
Okay, it's a public hearing. I imagine some of you are here for this item. So do we have speaker slips?
Chair resolves, we have nine speaker slips on this item.
Great, if you could call them up. You'll each have three minutes. Please give us your name when you come forward. Speak clearly into the mic. Bring the mic down if you need to, if you're a little shorter or up, if you're taller.
Okay, thanks Commissioner. First speaker will be Mark Brodin, followed by Sylvia and Cecilia Jenkins. So Mark, please come up.
Thank you. In 1985, 37 years ago, my wife and I moved to Oceanside to Regency Hills Community, which is this area where you're looking at that area where the residence is next to this. And in February 7th this year, we received a letter from the city, so did a lot of folks here. And it said that if you live within 1,500 feet of this business, it's going to be located in your neighborhood. But it also added, you have to come to the planning commission public hearing on February 14th, which was continued. And it said, quote, "Should you wish to challenge this project at some future time, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing in written correspondence delivered to the planning commission at or prior to the public hearing on February 14th." Well, that caught a lot of folks in the neighborhood's attention because of the way you all wrote it. So we decided we'd write a letter to the city, which we wrote to you all, and we submitted it in advance. And it said, here's future issues, here's questions, and here's concerns, so we could get them all on the official record, whether we wanted them or not. So at that point, we were kind of on the fence, should we be against this or for it? So we decided, how do you gain information on a company like ChemStation Pacific? So we went to the property, we scoped it out. Another day, we went to the property and the owner was there. So we introduced ourselves because he was there as a security question, what are you guys doing here? So on March 5th, we went to their open house because we weren't ever invited to the previous one where nobody attended. Because they said they sent a letter to everybody and nobody in the neighborhood. I checked 25 people, nobody ever got that letter, but it supposedly came from a mailing list from the city. So we went to the one on March 5th and there was about a dozen people there. We took four of them with us, so I know who those people are. And we wanted to find out, who are they? Well, they're a franchise like an Arby's or a 7-Eleven. Their parent company, ChemStation, has been in business since 1977, has 63 USA locations. And as a result, they're regulated by the federal government, the state government, the county, wherever they are, and local laws and regulations, just like we have in Oceanside. So we figured, okay, what do they have to comply with? They have to comply with fire codes, the EPA dot laws, USDA and FDA requirements. So ChemStation Pacific, I did a little further checking because I used to work for the City of San Diego. And I saw that they have a business license there for seven and a half years. And during the time they were there, they had no incidents, no complaints. They relocated to Oceanside, they're not new here. ChemStation stores and distributes biodegradable chemicals, disinfectant solutions. Their products are water-based, they're not petroleum-based, and they're not flammable. ChemStation Pacific is a small owner-operator business, which the man stated. And they did hold three open houses, which almost nobody came, probably two dozen people. So a lot of people didn't get the information.
If you could wrap it up, sir.
And the last thing I would say is that the property runoff has to be monitored by the county health department where you have to have your plan. So I have one concern, and that is there's a wildland vegetation on both sides of North and on both sides of Loma Alta Tributary. And for two years, no one's ever maintained it. So if they would maintain it, then I would say I'm in favor of these people. So I want to thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sylvia, followed by Cecilia Jenkins and Jesse Dobson. Sylvia?
Sylvia.
Come to the podium.
My name is Sylvia and due to the time, I'm going to speak fast. I did send a letter and it's almost on the end. It really specifically addresses the chemicals. I wrote down the chemicals, contrary to what they're saying. Chemicals are chemicals and they are dangerous, but I'll tell you a story very quickly. If you look at the property in Scripps and Cenitas just across, adjacent to that, there was a man that owned the property, right named Robert Hall. He had a lot of chemicals there. The man died of cancer and so basically, the family wanted to develop the land. They found out that the land was completely contaminated. There was also a creek and I can tell you that my father died of cancer. People that lived around there, they died of cancer, their children got brain cancer. We have a friend whose father died of cancer and now he has cancer himself. So when you hear that chemicals are not dangerous, they are chemicals dangerous, there are creeks all over here. That happened to be a creek and that is what happens when you have chemicals. It was allowed. What the city did, because they couldn't sell the land because it was contaminated, the city took the land and they put grass on top of it and they made it a field for children to play in it. The people that were there and they had cancer and with children with cancer, they had a choice to make. They sold their property and they kept very quiet because otherwise the property values would go down. The whole area, the value would go down. The city kept very quiet. Those records are in the city, the SEQA reports are in the city. There's no, I saw them there, they're in the court documents. Yes, accidents happen and in this case, this could happen in Oceanside. We have a creek that runs to the ocean. You have ducks playing there in the summer at Buccaneers Beach. You have tons of children playing in the water. So not only would a neighborhood be contaminated, it would be all over the place. These are flammable, contrary to, some of them are used for fireworks. What happens when you have something like that and there's no odor? So by the time you find that there's a leak, like this Robert Hall, nobody complained there was no odor until after, which when everybody started dying of cancer and these children, out of nowhere, we're getting these cancers. And that's about my line. At what point will the city start caring for the health and safety of our children, our families and the habitats? The animals there, you have doves there that are protected species. You have protected species by the environment. No SEQA reports have been done, no reports have actually been done. The SEQA report that was entered to the city to allow the permit, that's section 19, that article 19 that is quoted, that has nothing to do with contamination. It has nothing to do with anything that we're discussing here. It has to do with a permit to paint, to do plumbing, to put our handicap wrap, but it has nothing to do with what's at stake here. So I'm asking you to look at the SEQA report that the city entered as the condition to give the permit. It is not there. They also said that the creek is dry, the creek is not dry. The creek has been there and it's always there, open. Even over a cold, you can see the waterfall coming out. There's an open creek, there's water there, there's animals and there's children that play in the area. Thank you.
Here is Cecilia Jenkins, followed by Jesse Dobson and Timothy Shaney. Cecilia?
Hi, my name is Cecily Jenkins and I also submitted a letter. I am here this evening to oppose the city granting the conditional use permit to ChemStation Pacific business, not because I have any ill will toward the business owner or the nature of his business. He's a nice enough guy and I went to one of the open houses he offered. I listened with open mind to the information that he had to present. And I believe that he intends no harm. I do feel badly that he made the choice to purchase this piece of property with or without knowledge that it was zoned for maximum 120 gallons of hazardous chemicals. The request now for storage of up to 20,000 gallons of chemicals seems excessive. And the reasons that it seems excessive is the reason for my opposition. So in my opinion, this business needs are incompatible with the safety regulations dictated by the safety experts who designated this land to be light industrial and zoning limited, zoning of limited business. These designations are absolutely appropriate assignments to ensure safety of those living and working in the relatively densely populated surrounding area, which contains numerous schools, businesses and homes in fairly close proximity to the storage structure. If the city disagrees with these land use designations, then we suggest that they follow proper channels to request changes to those designations. But approval of a permit would set a precedent for future applicants wanting to do the same. I'm not an alarmist, nor do I have any fear of chemicals in general. I'm a realist and though I don't catastrophize about bad things happening, that I do believe in taking responsibility, reasonable precautions for protection in case catastrophic events do occur. Anyone who has a life insurance policy is doing just that. We don't anticipate dying unexpectedly, but we protect our families in case we do. To disregard the safety mandates limiting type and quantity of storage of corrosive and oxidizing materials is essentially to support increased risks to the health of area residents and business employees, to support risk to preservation of a clean environment, to support risk to the stability of property values, which have been steadily rising in our neighborhood. One of our neighbors who works with a real estate attorney confirmed that disclosure of excess chemical storage is required should residents choose to resell their homes. Risk of accidental spillage or combustion of excessive quantities of hazardous materials could clearly threaten many things that make our neighborhood strong and wonderful. And for the Oceanside Planning Commission to ignore the overwhelming opposition of area residents, 33 were in opposition and we're not going to present each of their letters, but you have reviewed those. Only four were in support and those four were either clients or business associates of Mr. Padwana. To make this decision would be to blatantly disregard the public that you are sworn to serve. So we ask that you do not grant this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Dobson, followed by Timothy and Annie.
Thank you, Scott. If I could get the audience to refrain from clapping, this is not a play or some other event. It's just, it's not the style that we run these meetings. Appreciate the support, but let's keep the clapping down, please.
Vietnam was not kind to me. I'm a retired Marine who's been living in Oceanside practically most of his life. This facility is being proposed, they increase in this facility. It's located just down the road from a school, okay? One thing I don't bite. Facility is near a housing area. It should be located in an area where there's no residents, not right across the street. Is odor a concern with these dangerous chemicals? I don't know. Maybe somebody can answer that. For 48 years, I've lived in my home, which is in Vista, by the way, just up from this, on top of the bluff. And I've been happy with my home, but there's been several projects. I don't know, because it's an industrial area or something, they always try to stick a lot of these undesirable facilities near my home or the area in which I live in. Like just down the road here, a few years back, they wanted to establish a huge trash transfer plant where all the trash from North County would come right down in our neighborhood. But we were lucky, we fought that and we were lucky to defeat it some years ago. And hopefully this project, this request here for this project also will be disapproved. People who bring these types of projects into an area always point out how good the project is until something bad happens. And I don't think, you know, in a residential area, you shouldn't have to put up with this type of stuff. Just recently, what, two or three years ago, there was a proposal for them to put a large amount of these big tractors and trailers right down the road in Oceanside, just on the other side of Vista, the city limits. But like I said, they always say, hey, we're going to do great things until something bad happens. Thank you, and I appreciate the fact that I had the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir.
Timothy Shaney, next speaker, followed by Annie Atherton and Candy Poggy. Timothy?
I moved into Oceanside in 2019 from New York City with my wife. For the usual reasons, people move to California, beautiful weather, beautiful nature. Just heard something about the best intentions and accidents happen. I lived in New York City in Lower Manhattan. In 2001, on the morning of September 11th, I woke up less than a mile away from my apartment. Plane had hit the Twin Towers. So things can happen. And as another speaker said, I don't want to horribilize. I don't think that catastrophe is necessarily going to happen. And we heard some about the mitigation plans. My thought is that you don't need a mitigation plan if you don't have a giant amount of chemicals in a residential neighborhood. Speaking of that neighborhood, I love my neighborhood. And as somebody else said, that it's a zone for light industrial, limited industrial, that has a hazardous chemical limit of that has a hazardous chemical limit of 120 gallons, I believe. We're talking about over 20,000 gallons, you know? And people like to say, oh, it's soap, you know? But you wouldn't want 20,000 gallons of soap to spill in your house. You don't want it to spill in the Loma Alta Creek. Loma Alta Creek is right there. Loma Alta Creek, 4630 North Avenue and my house, right there together. I think that it's also important to look at how this neighborhood has changed, you know, if we're going to talk about existing structures. You know, that building was built in the 80s. My house was built in the 80s. It's a lovely vintage 80s ranch. But, you know, a lot has changed. It was 100,000, let's see, 100,000 people in the city of Oceanside, let's see, probably in 86. So today, the population, we looked around and we saw it estimated that it was 175. That's an increase of 75%.
Sir, if I could get you to wrap up your comment or question?
Yes, sir. So what I'm saying is, if it was okay for 120 gallons to be stored in 1986, when there was 75% less people there, why is it okay with all these people, me being one of them, my wife being one of them, to put 20,000 gallons of chemicals there? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Annie Catherine Hudson, followed by Candy Pogi and Carl Bubek. Annie, please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Anne Catherine Hudson. I'm a resident of the adjacent neighborhood and I oppose approving this conditional use permit. Firstly, the CEQA exemption. It is noted that the lead agency has determined the project qualifies for an Article 19, Section 15301, existing facilities categorical exemption. The key consideration in this exemption is whether the project involves negligible or no expansion of use. This project does not meet this exemption. Though the facility is zoned as light or limited industrial, its previous function was not the storage of high volumes of hazardous chemicals. Thus, this key consideration qualifier is not met. I was told by the project planner that this property formerly manufactured parts for aircrafts and that it did not hold a permit to store volumes of hazardous chemicals beyond the upper allowable limits in Oceanside. Additionally, the outdoor area was not used for storage or spill mitigation previously, as is the intention with this business. What was once a parking lot now has to be redesigned to protect a vulnerable creek from hazardous chemical spills, house hundreds of gallons of flammable substances, and serve as a storage area for dozens of large containers of hazardous chemicals for mixing, storage, and transport. The key here is that the contents and the intent of the facility is going to be quite different than its previous use, which truly, most recently, has just been sitting empty. With the recent million dollar federal grant received by Oceanside to clean up Loma Alta Creek, a host of wildlife in the area, including endangered species, and an increase in wildfires, it seems ridiculous that this project would be exempt from the required environmental study with the proposed business chem station seeking to store above the upper allowable limit of hazardous chemicals. This brings us to chemicals, which I have heard the owner casually refer to as soap. This seems to be intended to imply that they are benign. If this were the case, they would not hold the classification of hazardous. The letter from, excuse me, if there were no danger, we would not have been notified of this request and there would be nothing to vote on. The owner of the facility points out the chemicals are used for sanitation in restaurants, but the fact remains that these are hazardous chemicals. The letter from Klaus Bruckner and Associates, a firm hired by Chem Station to address the concerns, claims that sodium hydroxide is not toxic, and I believe he said that in his presentation, according to the California Fire and Building Code. However, sodium hydroxide was first registered as a pesticide in 1951. A summary from various safety data sheets I have encountered indicates that very small amounts of sodium hydroxide are toxic if ingested. As per the EPA, sodium hydroxide, let's just say, a small volume, the weight of two sheets of copy paper, is toxic if ingested. So these are toxic chemicals. They pose a fire risk in the parking lot with no sprinklers, in the hot sun, on the pavement, and it's simply not the place to store this volume of chemicals near residents in a city whose population has increased by 75% since the area was built. I see I'm up. Thank you kindly.
Next speaker is Candy Pogi, followed by Carl Bubek and William Rubin. Candy, please come up to the podium.
Well, I'm not going to go over exactly what everybody else has said. Our main concern is bringing chemicals next to a neighborhood, next to a school, next to a church. And the part that upsets me is we are minimizing the word chemical. We're minimizing hazard. The owner himself made a statement that if one of the chemicals had gotten on one of the guy's feet because he was wearing sandals, yes, he could lose a toe. We just told, they said nothing permanent would happen. Losing a toe is pretty permanent. So our big concern is health, is safety, and the investment we made. This is our family. This is our children. This is our churches, our home. It's a huge investment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Carl Bubek, followed by William Rubin.
Good evening, sir. Give us your name.
My name is Carl Bubek, retired Marine. Shortly after retiring, I went into the warehousing business. I worked there for 10 years as warehouse supervisor, set up six warehouses. And all that period of time, the biggest thing that I got across was that it's not if an accident's going to occur, it's when it'll occur. The thought, I don't know all the details as far as the chemicals that are going to be in this warehouse. I don't know if they're going to add additional chemicals once they're in, if they're in. All I know is that I got two baby girls across the street from me. With the thought of them being harmed, my next door neighbor has two little boys and a little girl, and that thing kind of, it scares me. It scares me with the thought that the planning commission may or may not be protecting us. To me, that's your job, is to look after us. The difference between 120 gallons to 20,000 gallons is a big difference. I just hope that we can make it safe for my neighbors. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is our last speaker. It's William Rubin. William, please come up to the podium.
Thank you for letting me have the time to speak. My name's William Rubin. I've been a resident in this neighborhood for 38 years, but it was first planned and built for families to live there. Beautiful neighborhood, nice area, and we enjoy it very much. And I went to both of these meetings, on the 5th and the 7th, with the project manager of this building. And I tried to keep an open mind in operation. I listened to what they had to say. On the second occasion being there, though, there was many other people there asking questions and we heard a lot of, I do not know, or I probably not, or I don't think so. Many of the residents are concerned here that this company moving in our neighborhood because it's endangering our homes, our families. And even though it was stated by the proprietor of this business, he did not think it interfered with real estate values. Well, I disagree with him wholeheartedly because as a moral issue, he said you don't have to let anybody know about it. Well, as a moral issue, I think as a homeowner, if you were selling, you'd let somebody know if they had children. If not, most buyers run around the neighborhood and look in the area before they buy. But that statement's not really true. They're 100 feet from this creek behind their fence and there's over 100 endangered species, including the aurora toad, that are right in this area. This creek goes a long ways down Oceanside, I think all the way to Alta Creek there, or it goes all the way to the creek. It passes a lot of homes, a lot of businesses where people have children. Also, we've experienced a lot of, not too long ago, evacuation notices for fire. In the back of this building is a lot of trees, foliage, grass, dry, and they could be a fire there, not necessarily started by a business, but also contributing to a wildfire there. One of the things I want to say, because most of the residents already covered it, there's a fertilizers and compost landscape business right next door. I think that could create a problem too in a fire. Also, it was said here that he, there was no hazardous materials there and he turned around and said, well, I even have some of my customers asking me about my expertise of handling hazardous materials. Well, if there is no hazardous material, why would it be asking you for your expertise? And always address, there's a gas company, there's paint companies and everything else, but I'm not, I don't care about those other companies. I care about his company because those other companies are not in my neighborhood, they're not close to our home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? I think we're out of slips, but we can invite anybody who didn't turn in a slip to speak as well before we close the public hearing. Okay. Don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll invite questions. City planner, do we have somebody from the city's fire department present?
Chair Rosales, we do. We have the Fire Marshal Chief David Parsons is here.
Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission.
So you heard some of the testimonies and input and you saw the presentation. I guess my core question is, your staff looked at this project, looked at the mitigating circumstances that the company could take on in order to make it safer than were they not to have containment and other elements. Do you want to go a little bit more into the detail of what you looked at and your own take on the project coming to us?
Yes, sir. I'll introduce myself again in case folks didn't hear. David Parsons, Division Chief of Community Risk Reduction and serves as Fire Marshal here in the city. So in general, the way the process works is the applicant brings, through the planning department, brings their project forward and it gets submitted to the subject matter experts, the fire department being one of them. However, in the case of more complex hazardous materials business such as this, we actually require a hazardous materials report from a specialist. And the contractor that the applicant used is actually one that we vet and approved. So I did hear one concern about the contract, about the folks that prepared the report, but that's actually someone that we have to approve. And this particular contractor is what we consider one of the best in the business, Klaus Bruckner and Associates. They're experts in this and we trust their judgment. Regarding where our authority comes in, we apply the California Fire Code and the California Business Code and make sure that the hazardous materials portion of it is dealt with correctly and that's a legal means of applying the Fire Code and the Business Code to this business. The contractor reviewed the business plan and the amounts of chemicals and the types of chemicals and applies the Fire Code and the Business and the Building Code as to safety measures for sprinklers, containment, primary containment, secondary containment, and all of the proposed practices and also practices that we are going to require and enforce have been agreed to by the applicant and it's outlined in the document, in the document prepared by the contractor. And as a condition of approval, we've conditioned the applicant that they're going to have to meet every item on the hazardous materials report before they're approved and we issue and approve the billing permit. That's kind of the general of how we got there and I'm sorry if I didn't answer your question specifically. If you could repeat it, I'll make sure I get it.
I think, thank you for the run through on the process itself. No, I think you answered my basic question. I might have a secondary one, but I do have a follow up question. So when Klaus, is it Klaus Bruckner?
Klaus Bruckner and Associates, yeah.
When they do their assessment of the site and they stipulate, you know, you're going to have to follow these conditions, these requirements in order for your project to go forward, do they look at off-site impacts or are they just looking at architectural containment and other impacts just within associated footprint, if you will?
Yeah, your second statement. They are just looking at the business, at the site, at the immediate area. They're not looking outside of that. That would be complex and also is outside the scope of what they'd be really able to do in a simple way.
Okay.
So they're not looking anything beyond the site plan.
Who has that jurisdiction? If that, and I would imagine that falls within certain parameters when you actually are obligated to do kind of an assessment outside your boundaries and who would that typically be jurisdictionally?
So the way the Fire Code and the Billing Code are designed, it does treat each site as a separate entity and so the hazards are actually looked at in a global way, looking at the site. When it comes to a larger area, the county is the one that has the authority through the Unified Program Agency Administration, which is the state and county and how they apply hazardous materials. When it comes to environmental impacts, that's not the fire department's purview. There are other folks in the city that will respond to that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the chief while he's here?
Just one quick one.
Go ahead.
And I know it's immediately adjacent to the site, but there was a comment that was raised by the public about the potential for fire in the creek and any association with these chemicals. So was the creek part of your analysis since it is adjacent to the site or is that outside of your purview?
That's correct. The creek is not part of our analysis. The building and fire code is about structures, it's about containment and about safety. So regarding the chemicals and regarding the fire protection, that's our purview. We reviewed that and as long as they meet the requirements of the report, which we enforce that, then it's safe as far as the Fire Code's concerned.
Thank you.
Commissioner Custer?
Along that same land, is that on? Yes. Do we know, so we don't know or you don't look into whether there's any impact by the fertilizer being next door?
No, not specifically.
Yet again, another one. Okay.
Again, thank you, chief. Appreciate the input.
I'll be available if you need me for more.
Chair Rosales, if I may offer a bit of information, as part of the review process, you know, the city sends, or the planning division sends the application out to a multitude of reviewing disciplines. Part of the, one of the reviewing disciplines is the city's watershed protection program. We have Justin Gamble here who heads up that program. If you have any specific questions related to that topic.
Great, thank you. I did have a question. There was a comment raised about the exemption for CEQA. Given that the project is expanding its storage from a very small amount to a very large amount, can you refresh our memory on why this project would receive an exemption as opposed to a more robust environmental review?
Sure. So this type, Chair Rosales and members of the planning commission, this type of review is really to establish the use and to make sure that any potential hazards or conditions are identified through conditions of approval that are enforceable by this body and the city council. It's not establishing a new development. There's no impacts associated with establishing the use with respect to CEQA. It's, those concerns are addressed through a multitude of other agencies and reviewing divisions and departments. It's not necessarily a CEQA matter. They've complied with all the requirements. Were this to be a new build, then certainly a more robust CEQA review would occur. This is utilizing an existing facility and they're just establishing a residence there and then those are specifically, those potential impacts are specifically covered by the conditional use permit and the use permit and associated conditions of approval.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask for one more question?
You can ask as many as you like. Go ahead, Commissioner Hayes.
Thank you. Kind of along those same lines, and I think this is something that would be helpful. There was, there were a couple of comments about this not being zoned properly. And can you explain just the difference between the zoning and the conditional use process?
Sure. So Commissioner Hayes and members of the Planning Commission, you know, generally with the planning, there's uses that are allowed in certain districts, but they're subject to a CUP. It doesn't mean that they're not allowed in the district, it just means we want extra oversight on those uses to be able to address any potential conflicts associated with the use and perhaps adjacent land uses, or just making sure that the city has proper oversight. So as an example, if you were to establish this type of use in any of the zones, in which the use falls under a broader category of industry general, which is our, which is our broad land use classification under which this use would be classified, it would require a conditional use permit. So in our most intense industrial zone, it's the general industrial district, it would still require a conditional use permit. So it's not really a function of the zone, it's a function of making sure that the use is properly regulated.
Thank you for the clarification.
And the conditional use permit is issued for a time period, correct, before, with certain conditions before the applicant has to demonstrate that they're following this conditional use permit requirements and then reapply at some later date?
Chair Rosales, the way a conditional use permit works is that it runs with the land. So once it's granted, it runs with the land, given that it's effectuated. So once the business were to be established and they take advantage of the entitlement granted, the conditional use permit runs with the land. And with that, the conditions associated with the project are enforceable for the life of the project. In this city, what we do is we record the resolution against the property, and it's known, it's known that any use that establishes here that's going to store hazardous materials are going to be subject to these conditions of approval, which are enforceable by the city in respect, we can call that project to this board if they were not complying with their conditions of approval, to revoke that CUP.
Great, and that's a, that's a good clarification. Thank you. Mr. Thompson, looks like you've got some input?
No, I was just here for questions.
Here for questions, okay.
I think I misheard Sergio's statement.
No, that's fine. Any other comments by Commissioners, or?
I do have one more question about the conditional use permit. So it seems like these conditions were very specific to the amount, this maximum amount and the type of chemicals that are being stored here. If it runs with the land, if somebody else was to come in with some other type of chemical product that was different than what these conditions assessed, what would be the process? Would they have to go through another CUP, or would this one still apply?
Commissioner Hayes, to answer your question, I'm not intimately familiar with every condition of approval and its wording with respect to this project, but in general, the CUP outlines the parameters under which, and what the use were approved in and what they're allowed to store there. It's subject to this hazardous materials document that's been endorsed by the Fire Department, and those are the materials that are allowed to be stored there. Were they wanting to change that, say they wanted to start storing diesel fuel there? Well, that would be, would require revision to the conditional use permit to store those types of materials there.
Thank you.
I have one more question. So I know in here, somewhere I read, I'm not seeing it right now, where they go from level one to four, level four being the safest. So the 120 gallons, to go above that, if I'm understanding you correctly, to go above that would have to, no matter whether it was in a one or a four, have to get a conditional use permit?
That's correct. Commissioner Custer, that's correct. With respect to 120 gallons, that's specific to corrosive materials. There's other thresholds in that zoning ordinance section that would trigger the requirement of a conditional use permit. But in this case, you're absolutely correct. It doesn't matter if it's level one or level four, it would still be subject to that conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't look like we have any more comments or questions, just a thought. So we're being asked to approve a conditional use permit for a very significant change in operations for a site that's light industrial. It certainly caught my attention. I work in an industry that has lots of these chemicals and larger amounts, and so I quickly went to what I know about hazardous materials and storage and so forth. Was there adequate containment? Did somebody else take a look at this? Did it fall within the applicable risk mitigation standards? And as I went through, all those were answered as yes. Granted, it is very close to a residential neighborhood, and it's a different operation than the neighbors are accustomed to. It does check off all those other boxes, and so that's what I looked for when I considered whether or not this project and this request for a CUP fit. That may not make others comfortable, but you know, that's what we're asked to do, is look at whether or not it checks the boxes, and whether some, lots of other eyes took a look at this and agree that, yes, if it checked those boxes, it can be there. So with that being said, I don't know how my other Commissioners feel, but I would be looking for some kind of motion either way to whoever you're feeling tonight, so.
Tom, I'd just like to make a comment that I think it's, I think that it was appropriate to require a CUP, and, but we heard from the professionals, and the professionals were saying, "Yeah, it's safe." So with that said, I think that covers that part of it. And as a Planning Commission, we are concerned about keeping the neighbors safe, and I think what I've heard tonight, it does that. And I think, no matter what, you have to look at the, I'm looking at the founder and the applicant, and I see that he's demonstrated good character, and I think that's also demonstrated by the letters that he presented. So I think you, the neighbors are going to have a good partner in the neighborhood that's good for the community, it's good for the economy, it's good for the city, and he's going to do a good job, and he's, and I appreciated what he had to say, and I appreciated the letters. So for those reasons, I'm going to support this.
And for, and for those reasons and more so, like as far as, I was really impressed with the Fire Department's consultant that they had and what he went through and how he did his due diligence on making sure this was going to be a safe business for the community. I would have to second that motion.
Yeah, you know, and I didn't mention that, but furthermore, yeah, piggybacking on what you said, the California Fire Code, the California Business Code, and the California Building Code all were looked at, and they all passed muster, so.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
I heard a second from Commissioner Obama. Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Vice Chair Morsi and a second by Commissioner Obama. Any other discussion?
Just one of the first comments that we heard from, I think it was Mark Brogan, asking about the creek being maintained by the new tenant. So I don't know if that was something that he was thinking about doing, but that was the only other comment I heard that wasn't addressed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Custer, any last thoughts?
Oh, no, I was just shaking my head and acknowledging what she said, yes.
So we have a motion to approve and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Obama?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Morsi?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and for your input. Move to item.
Chair Rosales, just one brief comment. It looks like we figured out the electronic voting system, so maybe on the next item we'll give that a shot.
Okay, great, thank you. We're going to move to item six. Item six is consideration of a development plan and regular coastal permit to allow construction of two, two-story duplexes on an existing single-family residence that would become a total of five units, and that's located at 1611 South Tremont. Applicant is Ashley, pre, pre, Ashley, you are the applicant, if you're here. Disclosures, I read the staff report, familiar with Tremont Street, I didn't go specifically by for this project. I don't recall any emails on this project. Commissioner Custer?
I went by the site, I looked at it from a Google map, from above and all angles, and read the report.
Commissioner Hayes?
Same.
Commissioner Obama?
Staff report, and I did the, familiar with the site and Google, Googled it.
And Vice Chair Morsi?
And that is the same.
Good evening, Shannon, how are you?
Good evening, I'm well, thank you. Good evening, Chair Rosales, Planning Commissioners, Shannon Vitale, Associate Planner in the Planning Division. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item Number Six, the construction of two new duplexes at 1611 South Tremont Street. The project before you consists of two entitlements, a development plan and a regular coastal permit. The development plan is required for the construction of a residential project involving more than two units, and the coastal permit is required because the project site is located in the coastal zone. The 8,100-square-foot site, outlined in red on this slide, is located at 1611 South Tremont Street, just south of Moore Street and north of Whaley. Situated within the South Oceanside Neighborhood Planning Area, the subject property has a land use designation of coastal residential high-density and a zoning designation of medium-density residential. The site is located in the non-appel area of the coastal zone. Surrounding land uses include a mix of single-family and multifamily development, with the majority of properties on this block containing multifamily units. There is an existing approximately 1,200-square-foot single-family residence located on the site. The remainder of the lot is undeveloped. The existing home will remain on-site with the additional units located at the rear of the property with access from the alley. The proposed project consists of four new units for a total of five units on the property. The units are configured as two two-story duplexes, with each duplex containing 1,621 square feet. Each unit consists of a bedroom and a den office area. The first-floor units are 788 square feet, and the second-floor units are slightly larger at 833 square feet. The project includes six off-street parking spaces, four of which are covered. Here is the proposed site plan illustrating the footprint of the two new duplexes. As seen here, the new units are located behind the existing residence with access from the alley. This slide shows the proposed elevations. The buildings incorporate stucco and hardy siding with balconies off the second story to help provide visual interest. The maximum height is 26 feet. Here is a colored rendering of the proposed project. Similar to adjacent properties, the existing single-story residence will remain on-site with the new two-story residences located off the alley. This is consistent with the pattern of redevelopment that has occurred in the surrounding neighborhood. The existing home will undergo exterior improvements, including new paint and roofing to match the new construction. As detailed in the staff report, staff has evaluated the project and finds it inconsistent with the general plan and local coastal program. The project's proposed density is compatible with surrounding properties that have multifamily development. The project will add four new units to the housing supply in the coastal zone. Additionally, the project qualifies for a Class 32 infill exemption pursuant to CEQA and complies with the zoning ordinance and the development standards for the R3 Zone, which I'll describe on the next slide. As shown here, the project complies with all applicable development standards. Although the allowable height for the R3 Zone is 35 feet, the proposed project is only proposing two stories, so it's compatible to the adjacent properties. The project provides six additional parking spaces on-site. The new parking spaces, which are accessed off the alley, make sure that the existing curb cut on Tremont is still there. There were three changes to the resolution. These were administrative changes. I just wanted to point that out to your attention. These were noticed after the agenda was posted. The first change is Condition Number 69. It updated the expiration date to March 14th due to the change in the public hearing date. Condition 71, there was a typo, so that's been corrected to reflect the correct project number, RC 28. And then Condition 86 was deleted because it was a duplicate condition. So in conclusion, staff is recommending the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a Class 32 catacral exemption for infill development pursuant to CEQA and approve the project by adopting Resolution Number 2022 P2 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is also available if you should have any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Shannon?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Just, I'm pretty sure I already, I know, but I just want to get clarified from yourself. It's now a one-bedroom with a large den, and the parking is like 1.5 per unit. If that den turned into a bedroom, it would still be 1.5 per unit, correct?
That is not correct. So this, this property does not benefit from the reduced parking because the lot size exceeds 7,500 square feet. If the project were to propose two bedrooms, they would need to provide additional parking at two spaces per unit, and that would require approval by planning staff.
That's kind of crazy, huh? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, would you like to come up and present, or just, okay, no presentation? Any, any questions for the applicant while she's here? Okay, great, thank you. It's a public hearing, so again, like our last couple of items, public's welcome to come up and provide input or ask a quest, not ask a question, provide input. Any speaker slips on this item? City Planner?
Chair Rosales, we received no speaker slips for this item.
Great, thank you. Don't see anybody rushing forward, so we will assume nobody's wanting to provide input on this item, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for consideration. I'll entertain a motion or questions or whatever your delight is.
I'll make a motion if we're ready.
I think we're ready. Go ahead, Commissioner Custer.
Does that qualify as a motion? Or do I need to read this? A motion to approve the project?
I prefer, yes.
Is that good?
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve project as proposed by staff. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the project by Commissioner Custer and a second by Commissioner Hayes. Any further discussion? Don't see any. Oh, and we do have a voting screen available, folks. Pretty exciting. So go ahead and vote.
It is going to be a two-bedroom.
City Planner?
Chair Rosales, we have four votes in favor of the project, one no vote. Commissioner Obama didn't vote.
Oh, I thought I expressed, yes, I just pressed it again.
Try it again.
Yeah, it's my lights lit up.
You can abstain. Don't want to, you just abstain.
It didn't show up, but can we take a verbal?
I think Vice Chair Morsi's not getting the same screen that we are.
Oh, so it's not quite working.
So perhaps Chair Rosales?
Let's go back to the old-fashioned way.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Obama?
Yes.
Vice Chair Morsi?
Can I abstain?
You can.
Yes, I can abstain.
You can abstain. And I am a yes. City Planner?
Let the record show, that's four in favor, one abstention, and that's from Commissioner Morsi.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Item seven is one of the ones I noted earlier, was being continued until March 28th. So we will go to item eight, which is consideration of a tentative track mat development plan and density bonus involving eight new, eight new proposed two-story residences located at, I believe it's 1630 Kurt Street. I don't think that's right. I think it's Whaley Street. It's at the corner of, north.
1728.
There we go, 1728 Whaley. So the north side of Whaley Street between Kurt Street and Hansacker, in the Fire Mountain area. Applicant is RREG Investments, or Reg Investment Series LLC. Disclosures, I know, I read the staff report, very familiar with this location. I used to live on Kurt Street. We received a bunch of emails, and I think that's it for my disclosures. Commissioner Custer?
Read the report, read the emails, and drove by and looked at the site.
Commissioner Hayes?
Almost the same, except for I used Google Maps.
Commissioner Obama?
Staff report, Google Maps, and lots of emails.
And Vice Chair Morsey?
Same.
Sergio, it looks like your presentation, go ahead.
Yes, thank you Chair Rosales, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Sergio Madera, I'm the City Planner for Oceanside Planning Division, and also the Project Manager for the Whaley Street Residential Project. Tonight you're being asked to consider three entitlements, a tentative map for the subdivision of the property, a development plan for the physical site development, site plan approval, and a density bonus for density above the otherwise permissible density for the site with respect to the general plan and land use designations. Briefly, the two-acre site is located on the north side of Whaley Street between Curt and Hansacker Street. The site is currently improved with five existing single-family residential dwelling units. The site does have a general plan, a split general plan land use designation with a small portion of the site, about half acre, along Curt Street with a single-family detached residential land use designation. The balance of the site has an Estate B residential land use designation. The entire site has a zoning designation of residential Estate B. Surrounding land uses in all directions include single-family residential homes. So the site's been designed with respect to the development standards associated with the residential Estate B zoning designation. The following, subsequent following tables outline the development standards that are required, the development standards that are proposed, and the notes kind of identify development standards from which waivers are being sought under the density bonus, where we'll have a more detailed discussion here in a few slides. So as an example, the minimum lot sizes for the REB Zone are 10,000 square feet, where lots one through eight generally have, are between 6,900 square feet and 9,000 square feet. And lots nine to 10, to accommodate the existing single-family homes along Curt Street, are ranging anywhere from 4,100 square feet to 40, almost 4,500 square feet. And the table goes on to further describe the minimum lot width and setbacks. You'll note that a waiver is required for minimum lot width for Lot 6, and a minimum setback standards for lots one through, I'm sorry, nine through 12. And we'll just go through the table real quickly. Lot coverage, there's only one lot that's exceeding the proposed, the maximum lot coverage for the zone. There's one lot that exceeds the lot depth to width ratio. The building height, the project's been designed with a building height that conforms to the REB Zone. The REB Zone allows three stories at 36 feet. All the homes are proposed to be two stories with a maximum height of 31 feet 4 inches. The project complies with the parking requirements for single-family homes, complies with the landscaping requirements, fence and wall height limitations, it complies with usable open space, and complies with the urban forestry requirements. Let's get into the site plan a little bit here. So these existing homes are going to be preserved along Curt Street, and their yards are going to be created generally where the existing fence line is for these homes. The one modification that will occur will be to this home here, and that's in order to meet the city's density bonus requirements, that for the income restricted units be at least 80% of the market rate units for the project. The project is proposing eight new homes, four which will front Hansacker Street, and four which will front an internal private driveway. Each home has been designed with a junior accessory dwelling unit, which is allowed by state law. There are two, of the four plans being proposed, there are two new floor plans. This shows the floor plan A, first floor, which shows the junior accessory dwelling unit, a garage, living area, and staircase, and the second story which has the bedrooms and some external decks. This is floor plan B, again, showing the first floor, I'm sorry, the first floor with a garage and living areas and a bedroom. Here, in this case, the accessory dwelling unit's actually on the second floor of plan Bs. And instead of showing you flat 2D street skate, or elevations, we just decided to show you the renderings on what it would look like along Whaley Street from existing residents on the east side of Whaley. Here's an aerial perspective that shows four new homes here along Whaley, four new homes along the internal private road, and then you could barely see them, but here are the existing homes sort of in the background here as you look west towards the ocean. And here's another street illustrative that shows the four proposed homes along Whaley Street. So the project is unique in that it's been designed, the new homes have been designed with two floor plans, but there's varied elevations and color schemes and material board, material schemes that are being proposed to provide some variety and architectural interest. Here's just a copy of the material boards that were included in the packet. Here's a landscape plan that shows front yard landscaping and street frontage landscaping, parkway landscaping. You'll note that the Curt Street frontage is really staying the same, there's no change over existing conditions today with the exception of the one minor modification to the lot here at the northwest corner of the project site. And so, we're going to get a little bit into the density bonus portion of the project. The first step in when we're dealing with density bonuses is to understand how many units can be built under the existing land use designations. As we mentioned earlier, the site does have a split land use of single-family detached residential on the western portion of the site here, and you can see the delineation line here is the stark line. The way our zoning or, our zoning map works is it describes both designations as yellow, so I apologize for any lack of distinction here. So this is the SFDR component of the project site, which is about half acre, and here is the density calculation for that. And with any density bonus calculation with respect to dwelling units, any fraction, any calculation that results in a fraction automatically gets rounded up. Here you'll see that the half acre results in 5.9, times 5.9 acres per unit equals 3.18 units, which is rounded up to four units. And then the balance of the site, as we previously mentioned, is EBR designated, and that calculation is shown here, that 5.63 gets rounded up to six. So the base density calculation for this project is 10 units. So when we take that base density unit, the applicant's proposing to reserve 10% of the project units for the very low-income category, that entitles them to a 32.5% density bonus. And this shows the calculation here, so they could build up to a maximum of 14 single-family homes on the site, but they're choosing only to build 12 units rather than the allowable As part of the density bonus, they are entitled to incentives or concessions and waivers from development standards. Here we kind of gave you a little bit of the definition of the incentive or concession. Basically, it's a request that results in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable housing costs. And waivers generally are allowed with respect to development standards that would serve to physically preclude the project at the density proposed. Cities are mandated to approve these waivers and concessions or concessions, with the exception if it would have a specific adverse impact, and here's the definition of specific adverse impact, it's very, very distinct, and the bottom line is inconsistency with zoning ordinance or general plan land use designation shall not constitute a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety. We can, you can deny one of these requests if it would have an impact on a registered historical resource, or if the requested waiver or incentive or concession would be contrary to federal or state law. And so, with respect to concessions, the applicant is requesting two concessions. One of them is a waiver of the undergrounding of overhead utilities requirement that's found in the subdivision ordinance, and a waiver of street frontage improvements. There'll be no curb gutter and sidewalk installed, new curb gutter and sidewalk install with this project. The project pro forma, which is all we can do is ask for reasonable documentation, the project pro forma does show that the requested concessions would result in approximately $2 million savings. With respect to waivers, these next table will identify the ones we've already briefly touched on, the waivers that are being requested. So one of the waivers being requested is a minimum lot size, and that's kind of an easy one to picture, is that if you ask for, they were required to do 10,000 square foot lots, then they couldn't get the number of units that are being proposed, and they couldn't develop at the density proposed. The other waivers associated with the project include a waiver from the minimum lot width, and a waiver from certain setback standards for the existing homes along Curt Street, a waiver for maximum lot coverage on Lot 9, and a waiver for the lot depth ratio for Lot Number 8. We've heard from the community some concerns with respect to this project's density, with respect to surrounding density, so we did a quick analysis, excuse me, and the coloring doesn't show up very clearly on this overhead arrow at this scale. But to give you an idea, staff analyzed all the, we typically do this, we, you know, where do we draw the boundary? So we used the boundary for this project at 1500-foot required notification radius to do a comparison of densities of existing, with respect to existing conditions, and comparing it to the project density. So the area generally with the hatched green is the REB portion of the neighborhood that was analyzed, and that comes in at around 2.75 dwelling units per acre, and you can see the math on how we did it here. The project generally with the yellow hatching is projects that have the SVDR land use designation. That generally, in the built environment within 1,500 feet of the project site, comes in at 5.04 units per acre. And the project's density as proposed is 5.58 units per acre, so not terribly different than what existing conditions are in the immediate surrounding area. You know, staff, one of the common themes that we've heard from, concerns we've heard from the public is that the ADUs actually represent additional density that hasn't been accounted for, and that is true, it hasn't been accounted for because that's what state law mandates. Excuse me, you know, here we cite the Government Code section that describes ADUs, and we've underlined a pertinent part, that it shall not be considered to exceed the allowable density for the lot upon which it is located, and shall not be deemed to be a residential use that is, that is consistent with the existing general plan, I'm sorry, and shall be deemed to be a residential use that's consistent with the general plan and zoning designations for the lot. The applicant is not required to show the ADUs as part of their entitlement, but they made a good faith effort to disclose what it is that they're proposing, and they showed how they have accounted for the required parking and all appurtenances that are associated with the ADUs. One of the other common concerns we've heard is project-related traffic and how it's going to impact the neighborhood. Well currently, the site accounts for about 50 AT a day when you account for the five existing single-family homes. There was a brief analysis done, it wasn't a full VMT, nor was it a local traffic analysis because the project doesn't exceed the thresholds that would require such studies. However, to be completely transparent, the applicant did provide a traffic study, a traffic summary prepared by a traffic engineer that shows that in total, the project would account for 168 vehicle trips a day. That's below the threshold of 200 trips that would require a local traffic assessment. The project would account for 118 additional vehicle trips per day when you account for the junior ADUs, which is well within the volume that the surrounding circulation network can accommodate. Finally, the other concerns we've heard is that staff is recommending a Class 32 CEQA exemption on this, and some members of the public were concerned that we were recommending this exemption. When you look at the threshold and the analysis by which we compare and identify potential infill exemptions, here this slide outlines the criteria by which we need to analyze whether or not a project is eligible for an exemption or not. So I'm not going to read every single one to you, but we've done the analysis. In addition, the applicant had prepared the required technical studies necessary to make this determination. We've also received a study from DDEC and Associates that kind of confirmed our understanding that the project is indeed eligible for a CEQA exemption, Class 32. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission issue a Class 32 exemption for the project, and that they approve the tentative map development plan and density bonus applications by adopting Resolution Number 2022 P04. That concludes my presentation, I'll be available for any questions that the Planning Commission may have. The applicant and their representative is here, and they do have a brief presentation to provide to Planning Commission.
Great, thank you. Before we go there, any questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Obama.
In Fire Mountain in general, I thought that curbs and gutters were not really wanted by the people who live there.
In general, it's our, it's our understanding that sidewalks aren't generally wanted in Fire Mountain. I couldn't identify a specific general plan policy as an example that addresses this. There are some provisions in the subdivision ordinance where the city engineer can recommend to the decision-making body to weigh the requirements for certain improvements associated with a subdivision, and we would expect that this was just a standard subdivision, that request would probably be made.
Poor Sergio.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you Sergio. Applicant, if you'd like to come forward and understand if you have a presentation?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening Chairman Rosales, members of the Planning Commission, Dan Niebaum with the Lightfoot Planning Group, representing the applicant, our offices are in Carlsbad. With me is Kevin Dunn with Rincon Homes tonight, who is the applicant and developer of this project. Well, I thank Sergio for his very thorough presentation, working through this project, touching all the density bonus issues. You know, we believe we've got a project that's going to provide additional single-family housing options for the community at varying affordability levels, and that the residential architecture, development plan, and lot pattern are carefully designed to complement the site surroundings and respect the neighborhood character. And Sergio went into that a little bit, he's this one, in showing you the general plan area and the different designations surrounding the site, and I think that's obviously an important component to consider here. You know, this applicant looked at a number of different layouts on this site and wanted to make sure that, you know, the lotting pattern and the development pattern is very much consistent with the surrounding area. I'm showing you this general plan, and I'll show you the zoning map area too, this is the general plan that shows the designation split on the properties, but this shows you better the lotting pattern in the area, I think. And this is the zoning, that same area, and that's our site with the single zoning designation on it. Again, Sergio had gone into detail on the site development plan, but we are proposing eight new homes and preserving the four existing homes on Kurt's, as we talked about. The homes would range to about 2,500, just under 2,500 square feet. Each new home's designed with an ADU unit, a junior ADU unit, just under 500 square feet. Homes have two car garages plus two parking spaces in the driveway, plus a parking space for the ADU. So there's five parking spaces available on each of these new home sites. The existing homes on Kurt's will remain with their current configurations. And three of those homes will be maintained, the one home will be enlarged a little bit as the affordable unit. Sergio had gone through the density bonus calculations in detail, I just have them here on my slide. Again, the ultimate density comes out at 5.58, and we're doing 12 units where, under density bonus law, could have up to 1,400, or 14 units in this project. I think this is something we wanted to get into a little bit more in detail on the density bonus, and Sergio had shown the same calculations, but as we look at our site, we're, you know, under the current designation, the EBR, we can do up to five dwellings, we're proposing eight new homes on that site under density bonus law. There are four homes under the existing SFDR going to be preserved, as is. There is current policy in the general plan for Fire Mountain to look at a density of 4.35 to use per acre, which is based on the 10,000 square foot lot minimum size. If that policy were applied here, it wasn't when we submitted the application, and Rincon stuck with their, I think what was the appropriate plan, but if you use that policy, there's a density opportunity that you could get up to 18 dwellings on this site, which is a lot. And that would involve probably something more like detached condos on very small footprint, or on very small lots to get in that footprint. Frankly, that wasn't the right plan. Rincon thought generally this was the, you know, appropriate plan to respect the existing lotting pattern, and to look at homes that would be consistent with the architecture of the neighborhood and maintain a distinct single-family look and feel for this project. and feel for this project. Sergio had gone through the details on the incentives, but I have in my slides, Sergio stole most of my slides, so if you've seen this before. And he went through the waivers, which I appreciate, because most of the waivers are related to the, you know, the lot size pattern, but, and they're also related to the four lots on Kurtz, which is simply legalizing those lots. Those home sites sit on that same pad where they've been on for a very long time, and they're separated by kind of a break in the topography. There's a small wall behind them, so that's where you end up with these smaller lot sizes. But they really legalize that existing pattern and footprint that they sit on. Let me go back one here. Again, the lot coverage reductions applicable only to one lot, a lot death reductions applicable only to one lot, and the homes meet the height limit requirement for the zone. Sergio touched on the traffic analysis that we had done, and we did do that. I mean, every project does look at traffic in Oceanside, and we worked with traffic staff and our engineer, prepared the summary reports we talked about. We do have a maximum if the ADUs counted, even though we don't need to count, not required to count traffic for the junior ADUs. We wanted to do that to be conservative. And at the maximum, we'd have 118 ADT, new ADT with this project. And when you look at VMT screening, you know, our project's consistent with the general plan. We have under 1,000 ADT. Our projects only can generate a max of 118, so the project's considered screened out, and we don't do a VMT assessment for a smaller project like this. The same way that we wouldn't do a local transportation assessment, which I have at the bottom of the slide. Again, we're less than 200 ADT. That's kind of the lower threshold of doing that assessment, so no LTA was required for this. But we did look at traffic and provide the traffic report to staff for that review, and, you know, there was no impacts for the small amount of traffic like this for this project. Again, Sergio had shown these slides, but I think it's important to show you them again. You know, obviously, looking from this angle on the project. And the architecture is really, again, designed to blend into the eclectic of the neighborhood and provide some interesting street designs with the varying floor plans and elevation options we have for the project. And the architecture and the materials consist of hardy shingle, lap siding, cedar ship lap siding, and light sand stucco and stone veneer and standing seam metal roofs, you know, which really blend together, create building forms, and facade offsets, and roof elements, and design details that create this nice five-sided architecture in this project. Sergio had shown the material boards, but again, those combine those elements together in these earth tones and different combinations of darker colors and grays and blacks and whites on this project. This was the table, I think Sergio had shown, just showing the varying floor plan and elevation layouts for the project. And Sergio had shown these, so I'll kind of go through these more quickly. These are the areas. And this is the landscape plan coming up that Sergio had walked through. Again, you know, we propose landscaping the front yards, along the frontages, on the slope areas, on the Whaley side, and on Huntsaker side, and on the rear yard slopes for the project. Finally, you know, we think this project does complement the neighborhood. It's utilizing state density bonus law, but it's really been designed to, you know, complement the site surroundings and respect the neighborhood character, preserve the existing single-family homes, and provides high-quality architecture and landscape design, and integrates well with the existing neighborhood pattern. And the proposed development meets the goals, intentions, and objectives of the general plan and the zoning ordinance and the density bonus law, and also the city's affordable housing objectives. And we would ask you to concur with staff's recommendation on the project tonight. And I'm, excuse me, available for any questions now or later, after you hear from the public.
Thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan? I think we're good right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
City Planner, any slips to speak on this item?
Chair Rosales, I believe we have eight speaker slips have been submitted for this item.
Called, if you could come to the dais. Again, you'll have three minutes. Bring the mic up or down, depending on how short or tall you are, so that we can hear you clearly and give us your name. Thank you.
Okay, first speaker is Jesse Schulman, followed by Lisa Quinn and Danny Powers. Jesse, please come to the podium.
Hi, thank you. My name's Jesse Schulman. First of all, I'm here to oppose this, mostly the density, also the elevation. This one's 31 feet, or I think in the South Ocean Side one we saw earlier was 26. The statement that these fit in, they look nice in the picture, but if you look at that overhead elevation, it's, you know, eight new homes that look nothing like the single stories that you mostly see in our neighborhood. So the elevation and the density is what I'm here to oppose. I think there's other people that'll speak about the technical things, but this is who I am. I moved to Oceanside in the 90s. My dad bought the restaurant that's now Don's Country Kitchen, and I bought my home on the corner of Hicks and Whaley in 2013. I got three young kids from 20 months to seven years. I walk these streets every night with my dog and walk him with my kids. And, you know, I walk here on Huntsaker where I kind of do wish there was a sidewalk, because there's often cars parked on the street, and that pushes you into the street. I've had to jump out of the way of cars. I've had people like, look like they're driving towards me intentionally. They drive fast on Huntsaker. They drive fast on Kurtz. So I'm really here to represent me and my family, and the fact that I don't necessarily feel safe for my kids up in front of my house today, and this is, as we've seen in the studies that they provided, even voluntarily, it's going to increase that traffic. I'm also here representing my mom. She's over here. She lives on Kurtz. And my in-laws live seven doors up on Hicks. They've lived there. My father-in-law's mom bought that house in the 70s. So we've been around here a long time. We bought in this neighborhood because we liked the way it looked. We liked the neighborhood, and I just don't like what this looks like it's going to do, you know, to our neighborhood. Like I said, it's not, it's a pretty picture, but when you think about what it's going to do and the impact it's going to have, the safety of the people in the neighborhood, just me walking my dog every night around this neighborhood, having to, you know, see these big houses looming over. I mean, these all have, if you look, most of these have the third-story deck. We already have one of those. You know, they built one in our neighborhood. It looms over our street. And I think all of these have what looks like a third-story deck. It's just large, tall, dense homes. And with the ADU and everything that they're going to add, I mean, we all know, people are going to spend a lot of money on these homes, and they're more than likely going to have to fill up the ADU and fill these houses to their maximum occupancy to, you know, meet the mortgage and cost of purchasing them, and the traffic of all the people that are going to be living in there. Four bedrooms plus the ADU, just a lot. So I'm here to oppose for those reasons.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Lisa Klein, followed by Danny Powers, and I believe Mark. Lisa?
Hi, good evening. As longtime residents of Fire Mountain in general, and Huntsaker Street in particular, we are asking the city and the planning commission to take into consideration the following objections to the proposed Whaley Street development, and deny approval of same, and further find that no exemptions to CEQA applies. The project does not qualify for the benefits of the bonus density law. The proposed development includes accessory dwellings, which are in fact additional residential units. Thus, instead of eight single-family homes on 1.61 acres, there are 16 residential dwellings. The increased density from the accessory dwellings are not properly accounted for. The proposed development density, including the accessory dwellings, is more than double the density of the existing estate zoning, and thus does not qualify for the benefits of the bonus density law. The proposed development and project density are unlawful and inconsistent with land use plans. The proposed development violates the city's duty under the comprehensive zoning ordinance to protect the existing family residential homes from excessive noise, population density, and traffic congestion, which will result from the increase in population and traffic due to the high-density development. The project is not exempt from CEQA based on the proposed increase in residential living space at the project site. The eight new homes and accessory dwellings alone will add at least 64 humans and possibly the same amount of new vehicles where one residential home now stands. The technical reports, i.e. DDEC, are irrelevant as they fail to take into account the actual increase in population and traffic density related to the proposed development. The significant increase in population and traffic in this rural residential community will in fact cause substantial environmental damage and increase population density, traffic, and noise. Allowing the project will result in a fraud upon the residents of Fire Mountain. Residents choose to live in Fire Mountain because of its unique rustic style, its spacious lots, and individual charm, which the city is duty-bound to preserve in accordance with the city's land use element of the general plan. Allowing the high-density profit-driven project under the ruse of bonus density violates the reasonable expectations of all of the homeowners of Fire Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Danny Powers, followed by Mark and Leslie Rush.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I live at 1705 Hicks Street, right down from this project, and I oppose this project for four specific reasons. Number one, aesthetically, it's overbearing. Every morning, I step out of my front door, and I look across the street at my neighbors' homes that were built in the 60s, early 70s, and there is a three-story monstrosity that you guys approved that I didn't come and speak at. It's put at a two-story, but because the sun deck is on top, it's massive. It's overbearing. Aesthetically, these have a sun deck. They're eventually, they're three stories. So I don't feel that it fits with the neighborhood. These homes were built late 60s, early 70s, and it takes away from the neighborhood. So, which leads to my next reason why I oppose this project, and that's the zoning issue. Current zoning calls for six units max. We're pushing for eight, and then we've made a deal on the four existing homes on Kurtz that we can sell that one off, and then we can push it to eight, and then possibly 16. So what you're proposing here is not a nice housing complex. You're taking my nice residential neighborhood that I love, where kids ride in the street on their bikes and skateboards, and you're essentially putting an apartment complex with zero parking. I looked for the plan. I called Mr. Madera today and talked to him, which he said it was on your site, the website. I could not find it. I was wondering what the driveway widths were, and the private driveway, can you park on that street? Because we already have narrow streets, which leads to my third issue. We already have parking issues. On the weekends, you are in the street, and the traffic is my fourth reason. It is going to impact our neighborhood drastically. You're talking about moving this many people in. They're going to have cars. They're going to have who knows what. And I am not opposed to development, okay? I am not opposed to development, but I do believe that if we could keep with the zoning, or reduce it, and maybe have a height requirement, that we don't build these ginormous three-story homes that kind of are overbearing, and we stick with the neighborhood kind of aesthetics that fit with the neighborhood. We are a tight-knit neighborhood. We're families, and this, to me, is an invasion of what we're trying to do. I mean, you guys are stewards of Oceanside. If we're not careful, we're going to turn all of our nice, family-oriented neighborhoods into condominiums and duplexes for the sake of developers that want to make money. And that's what it comes down to. I was told today, as I spoke with Mr. Madera, that I could sell my property for three times the amount and move out of state. I really wonder whose side you're on. Do you represent the people of Oceanside or the developers of Oceanside? I know my time is up, but I just, I'm passionate. I love Oceanside. I want to keep Oceanside a family-oriented residential neighborhood that is enjoyable, where we can enjoy it, not a money-making place that we are just flooded with condos, duplexes, and we have massive traffic issues. So, thank you. Sorry. I'm passionate about it.
Next speaker is Mark Malby. Apologize if I butchered the name there, followed by Leslie Rush and Candy Johnson.
This doesn't go fine enough. Thanks for your time. Don't really need it. So first thing is, isn't it great to have the ability that we can choose the direction of our community here in Oceanside? In my time living in Oceanside since 2015, I've become an active member in the community, and both in the city, and I really value living in Oceanside. I'm actually a new member on the coastal public committee. So I'm coming to see this, where we chose to live on Huntsaker. That very view that you're looking at now is from my house. So, and so it's not Whaley, it's actually Huntsaker. I back out of that very driveway every single day. So does my wife. You know what's going to happen? You know the speed of the vehicles run down Huntsaker Street? Pretty damn fast. And so now we're going to have everybody, because anybody who's going to afford these homes is going to be backing out every day going to work. So, you know, that's something to really think about in that area. And, you know, we talk about the state, and Sergio, you know, gave me a great amount of time, and I appreciate the time that you gave me, that the state has all the say here, and we don't have any say. And there's a time to say enough. We do have some say. This is our community. This is where we live. And zoning, and I'm not against the development. The last time we had a meeting here, or in another building, build six. Maintain the zoning that exists. Maintain that zoning that we were promised when we were, a zoning law and a zoning is your promise to me, that you'll maintain my neighborhood the way I bought it in, the way we made this commitment to our city in. And so I'm asking you to maintain that promise to me and maintain the zoning. I think development is inevitable. Build six. Don't build 12. I mean, don't build, build six new homes before existing. So don't build the 12, build 10. And that way, you maintain, we love those little houses down the corner. They're part of the crew of Oceanside. Build the rest of the houses that meet the current and existing laws. The number of exemptions are piling on. Any one of these exemptions is fairly reasonable, but I think there's like 12 of them. Is that reasonable, or are we just dragging this down the street till eventually we get to a conclusion that this is okay? But we've got all these little things that add up to a giant thing that are changing the nature of our neighborhood. In the last 19 seconds I've got before I take my turn, 3.5 density is nowhere near the 5.6. It's nearly double, nearly double. Too many waivers, too many incentives. And we look around the whole neighborhood and the whole Fire Mountain area. By approving this and approving all these waivers, this is the thin end of a very thick wedge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Leslie Rush, followed by Candy Johnson and Dennis McFadden. Leslie?
Good evening, Planning Commission members.
Leslie, would you bring the mic down? There we go. Thank you.
I'm a 19-year resident of Fire Mountain, and I oppose this development. I'd like to know who benefits from the Whaley Street residential development. The intent of the affordable housing law is to increase the supply of affordable housing. The Whaley project includes the conversion of one existing single-family residence on Kurtz Street to affordable housing. The developer has received planning department approval to build an additional three-market-rate homes with junior accessory dwelling units. That's six dwelling units over what would be permitted under the current zoning, to make up for that one affordable unit at a lower price. The resulting density is more than double what is permitted in the estate lot zone and the existing density in Fire Mountain overall. Requiring affordable units at one price increases the cost of other units because developers must make up the profit loss for the affordable unit. The offset is generally seen in more high-income housing. That will cause total production of new housing and affordable housing units to decline. Squeezing middle-class housing, inclusionary policy requires one class of household to subsidize another. An unintended consequence is that new housing is discouraged because inclusion is often not feasible. So no, the state of California does not benefit from the Whaley Street development. Does the city of Oceanside benefit from the Whaley Street development? The developer does not pay a penny for new roads, transit, school, parks, police, and fire protection, new water sources, or any other service. The traffic generated over Fire Mountain- The traffic generated over Fire Mountain by more than 200 additional car trips daily has not been adequately studied and will endanger children walking to and from Pomquist Elementary and Lincoln Middle School. So no, the city of Oceanside does not benefit from the Whaley Street development. Does Fire Mountain benefit from these developments? The residents of Fire Mountain are already dealing with massive traffic on our narrow streets due to cross-traffic through the neighborhood from Oceanside Boulevard to commercial areas along Vista Way and Highway 78. Approval of this project will result in all new developments, demanding waivers, incentives, and concessions to double and triple existing density, resulting in massive cumulative impact. So no, Fire Mountain most definitely does not benefit from this development. Fire Mountain residents have provided nearly 500 signatures against the Whaley Project to the Planning Commission. Fire Mountain residents need the Planning Commission that hears our concerns and represents us, not out-of-town developers solely motivated by profit. They contribute to the local political campaigns for influence and build without regard to the effect of the communities they destroy. The only beneficiaries of the Whaley Street development are the developers and the builders. The City of Oceanside Planning Commission Code of Ethics, number four, states that planning commissioner will strive to protect the integrity of the natural environment and the heritage of the building environment. Number five states that the commissioner will pay special attention to the interrelatedness of decisions and the long-range consequences of present actions. Please do not allow these developers, who are not invested in our community, to profit at the expense of Fire Mountain residents and the generations to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
These are our last three speakers. First speaker is Candy Johnson, followed by Dennis McFadden and Laney Cook. Candy?
Good evening, Council, Commissioners. My name's Candy Johnson, and I've owned a home in Fire Mountain for seven years, and I've witnessed the traffic triple in front of my driveway. California's imposition of inclusionary housing is concerning due to the multiple ongoing projects in Fire Mountain, including a mega Ocean Creek apartment. Fire Mountain homeowners will pay dearly unless plans are implemented to protect us and our pets from future cut-through traffic using traffic and speed mitigation measures. If not, our quality of life will be destroyed. The Whaley-Hansaker project developer got waivers, so they're not required to build sidewalks or provide setbacks, and the housing is underparked. As a walkable community, this will be disastrous for dog walkers and the neighborhood children. Out-of-area developers claim to be working with city planning and traffic to satisfy city requirements in SEQA. Ocean Creek's traffic analysis prepared by the developer's consultant is inadequate because it didn't study crucial intersections and was based on old data. I have several charts that I have provided to you guys. So the first one is, handout one, and it pertains to the pertinent Fire Mountain intersections that must be studied before final approval of any and all Fire Mountain projects in Handout two is traffic and planning that must address the cut-through traffic as required by the zoning ordinance articles, and I've included a few ways to mitigate traffic, which must be done before giving final approval of any of the projects. Last month, OPD traffic performed a vehicle count in front of my home due to safety concerns, speeding, a blind curve, and traffic volume. The daily average of 42, 25 vehicles passed by my driveway during peak hours from 7:00 in the morning until 11:00. That's 265 vehicles per hour, and I'm on a little street called Ivy that's two lanes. Handout three is Fire Mountain has only seven ingress egress accesses. One is on the north side, which is Oceanside Boulevard, and there's two accesses on Vista Way. And all of this is all like restaurants, medical, banks, markets, a gym, cemetery, multiple churches, et cetera. There's also a major cut-through that if you do a GPS, it's going to take you from right where the train station is, you go to Walmart, you're going to go directly through Downs and Ivy. Handout four shows that with Fire Mountain being only 2.4 square miles and having all of that draw there, I'm suggesting that maybe the El Corazon donate one or two acres of their 465 acres, which was gifted to the city in 1994, and it's Sprinter Close, and maybe they could do some of these projects over there. We have faith that our Planning Commission and the city council and the city officials will do what the law requires. Protect our pedestrian and pet safety, allow us the right to quiet enjoyment of our homes, mitigate traffic and the resulting noise and air pollution. The only silver lining with density is that our properties will lose value so we can request lower property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis McFadden, followed by Laney Cook. Dennis?
Oh, that was a little uncomfortable, burping in public and then not to say excuse me. Anyone with manners in this room would tell you that was not right, was wrong. But I looked it up as best I could. It was legal. Mr. Rankon, Mr. Kevin Rankon, even though the California law supports your project, the neighbors, Fire Mountain, we do not. And we know that this project, just like a burp in a public hearing, is wrong. It's not right for Fire Mountain. Because what would be right for Fire Mountain would be extending the lots on Kurtz Street to the minimum 6,000 square feet and keeping the remaining lots at a minimum 10,000 square feet. That's what would be true to Fire Mountain. Mr. Rankon, in future, when you drive through our neighborhood and you see the impacts of the precedent that your project set, you'll know. You'll know like each of us knew that burping in this room was wrong. You'll know that your development is wrong for our neighborhood. It may be legal. It may be successful, but you're wrong to come into our neighborhood and change its nature. Mr. Nebel, similarly, you're in your legal right to bring your snake oil cart into our neighborhoods and promise to make things better. We see through you. Your tactics of ushering in this Whaley Street project and that ridiculous siege-gaze-drive project may be legal. They may be successful, but you are wrong. You are fundamentally wrong for Oceanside. Planning Department, we recognize that you are just doing your job within the confines of local and state legislature. Please remember the people of Oceanside, people of Fire Mountain, and fight for us where you can. Out of 2,000 homes in Fire Mountain, we have approximately 441 signatures against this Whaley Street project. Lastly, for the record, I'd like to have a question on the docket. Since this project as-is is a density bonus project, shouldn't the entire project be deed-restricted from vacation rentals? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Laney Cook.
Hi, I'm Laney Ray Cook. I live at 2409 Dunston Street. I've been a 19-year resident of Fire Mountain. We do not object to developments that are reasonable and that are within the general plan zoning. However, this project, quite frankly, is an insult to us, who built this community into a livable and desirable place to raise our families. The assertion that this project does not have potential significant impacts is a daring one, and one that I trust that this commission does not accept. This project, combined with the numerous other projects in Fire Mountain, has the potential to result in significant cumulative traffic impacts that this, when we look just at this, as we look at all the other, just one project, one by one by one, oh, yes, we'll give this an exemption, we'll do this. You know, if we look, if all of these small projects screen out for traffic, if we give them all categorical exemptions to SEQA, how do we find out about these significant potential significant cumulative impacts like traffic, which will happen? Which project is the one that has to pay for that or has to be held responsible? This project needs to be held responsible. Section 15, 300.2B of the SEQA guidelines states that categorical exemptions are, quote, "inapplicable" when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant, and such is the case here. I fear for Oceanside. I fear that the use of this categorical exemption, when it is inappropriate, is a gateway to development that is unbridled, and once that gate is opened, it cannot be closed. And I urge you to deny the project as it is proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for speaker slips?
Chair Vazalas, that concludes all the people who have submitted slips to speak on this item.
Great, thank you. Still an opportunity for those that did not submit a speaker slip to come forward. Please come forward if you'd like to address the commission.
I'm Jennifer Meyer-Durks. I've been in Fire Mountain for over 30 years. What is to stop investors from buying these single-family homes and turning them into vacation rentals? Are there deed restrictions? These will rent for thousands of dollars a week. I know you have deed restrictions on the JADUs. What about the single families? Will that add to our housing stock? No, it will take it away. I recommend deed restrictions. It's not SEQA compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody want to start off? There's lots to cover. Vice Chair Morrissey, you look like you're ready to tee it up.
Well, that's an interesting point. Thank you. That's an interesting point about VRBOs. Could we ask if...
We can ask anything.
We can. Is that something that could be done as it sits right now?
Commissioner Morrissey, members of the Planning Commission, there is a condition of approval, I'm looking to identify it now, that would restrict the short-term rentals of any of these units. By nature, the new homes, the eight new homes with their junior ADUs would be completely prohibited from being offered as short-term rentals. The income-restricted unit would be prohibited from being offered as a short-term rental, and the other three units will be covered by the condition of approval, which I'm looking to identify here. So condition number 104 reads, "All units proposed as part of this project shall be rented for no less than 30 days." So we have covered that item. And moving forward, staff is working on a zoning ordinance amendment as directed by city council to explicitly include within section 3032 of our zoning ordinance, which covers density bonus at the local level, to prohibit all projects benefiting from a density bonus to be prohibited from being utilized as short-term rentals.
Another follow-up question, if you know, would the junior ADUs be built at the same time as the main?
It appears from the, and Vice Chair Morrissey, we could defer that question to the applicant. However, the floor plans that have been submitted show it all part of the main residence. It's no detached structure or anything.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's all part of the same floor plan that you would expect it to be built at that time.
That answers that. Thank you. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The density bonus laws that have come down from the state have been, you know, every neighborhood is affected, everybody is upset about them. Is there any kind of like window of time where this might be taken away? Is there any kind of laws that are coming down that are, is there anybody that's out there just like, they got like 400 or 500 people together on a petition? Is there something like that happening for the state to like take away this?
Commissioner...
If I could layer into that question, so we heard a lot about, and I used to live around the corner from there. I recall walking my kids near that home, and they were little then, and they thought it was a farm. It was so big, it had these trees, and it fit so nicely within the neighborhood. So I understand very clearly the attachment to the ruralness and unique character of Fire Mountain in that area. So what kind of discretion do we have? Because one suggestion was made, and I'm partially on board with this, to try to push back on the developments in Oceanside that are starting to change the character of Oceanside. I've made this comment before about all the new developments on the coastal area where single-family homes are being turned into condos. So discretionary on the part of the commission to push back on the density, on the state laws and our sort of obligation, forced obligation that we are, you know, that's upon us now. Walk us through that. If we were to either modify the project or just flat-out say no because it doesn't fit for these reasons, help us understand what our discretion is.
Thank you for layering on. That's a pretty dense layer. So let me address Commissioner Balma's comment first, and then I'll address your comment, Chair Vazalas. So Commissioner Balma, you asked if, is there any, do we see a horizon on, a window on the horizon where we think density bonus is going to go away? The short answer is no. Since we last updated our local density bonus ordinance in 2019, there's been three legislative cycles. Within each cycle, there's been updates to density bonus laws. So our current density bonus law is not consistent with state density bonus law, and the provisions that have been updated, relaxed development standards, they haven't tightened them up. So they're providing more density bonus than what's allowed. Now you can get up to a maximum 50% density bonus. There are certain projects that can qualify for an unlimited density bonus request. So to answer the, I think that answers the question for that. Chair Vazalas, there are some objectives we could, the city could craft, and we're currently analyzing this potential, we could craft some objective design standards by which we can compare these projects to. But we don't have discretion. The state law removes discretion from these actions. It's very clear in the state law that the city has, we're not to subject these projects to discretionary actions such as a conditional lease permit, which in normal circumstances in our city, a project that exceeds base density of the underlying land use would require to apply for a conditional lease permit. We can't subject these projects to a conditional lease permit. So the city has very limited discretion. We could, the city can make findings if they identify a specific adverse impact, which we can deny some of these waivers or concessions, but we can't deny the project. So I hope that, I think that may answer your question. If there's anything that I missed, part of your question, please clarify for me.
No, I think you've answered, and I think I knew the answer. I'm just trying to figure out, can we be creative in perhaps bringing the project down to a scale that still, you know, addresses, as we understand, the desire to develop more housing for Oceanside and the state, but then doesn't get us into hot water because we're outside the boundaries of the discretion that we don't have, really?
From a safety standpoint, I mean, one gentleman talked about walking his kids, and so I can see if the street is narrow and now there's going to be cars parked on both sides, is putting sidewalks in, is that something that's on the table?
That's the only one. That was a question I had as well. I know that they asked for two specific concessions because of the pro forma, but they didn't show them individually, and the cost for sidewalks was significantly lower than the cost for undergrounding. So did they look at it with just the sidewalks and still not undergrounding?
So let me answer the first question from Commissioner Morrissey, and I'll answer your question, Commissioner Hayes. So they would have to, the specific adverse impact would have to violate a written, quantifiable public safety standard, and I'm not familiar with any with respect to narrowness of width and not there being sidewalks in the community. Commissioner Hayes, to answer your question, the pro forma identified by line item the cost for each of the requested concessions. State law mandates that we approve these when we're provided with reasonable documentation. Courts have recently affirmed that we're not to analyze or scrutinize the reasonable documentation that's been provided. So really, the burden is on the city to find reasons to deny these requested concessions, and we just don't have any identifiable public safety metric that this project violates in the manner it's been proposed.
I have another comment.
Go ahead.
How much leeway do we have on architectural style with density bonus? I mean, I noticed this project actually took into account that they actually added siding and different elements around the whole entire house. Is that something that the developer just chose on his own, or did you encourage the fact that since they are going to get a density bonus, this thing's got to look good from every side?
Commissioner Balma, the architecture was proposed by the developers. The staff did not mandate the design that you proposed.
Can we, though? Can we do that on future density bonus projects?
If we had, Commissioner Balma, if we had written objective design standards, then we could subject them to those written objective design standards. The city doesn't have written objective design standards with two exceptions, one being in the downtown district and one being in the Sandless Ray Historic Area. Outside of that, we don't have any.
Back in my day, since I've been on the Planning Commission for a long time now, we actually had, we had that implemented... we actually had, we had that implemented, that if, if you exceed density in your area, you had to actually make it, what was it, like you had to have excellent design standards, like something where you add, and that's, I'm sure it's still written someplace, the excellence in design. So, I mean, this is the same thing. It's increasing the density, so it should be something where excellence in design is actually implemented onto every project. Like, this project's got a little bit different of a situation. It's actually done, it's on its, on its own, but I'm looking at a lot of future projects that don't.
So, Commissioner Balma, those, those policies still do exist in the general plan. They're described in section 2.23, I believe. They, they use examples like lots that are larger than the minimum, enhanced landscaping. By its nature, a density bonus project can perceive those as development standards that would preclude the project at the density proposed, and therefore, they could ask for a waiver from those standards. So, those are hard to rectify excellence of design with respect to density bonus projects. Going back to our earlier statement, we are currently looking into creating some objective design standards by which we can analyze, further analyze these projects to give us a tool where otherwise we don't have a tool. But that's a pretty large effort that's going to create, involve some consensus building among the community, and it's not something that's easily entered into. So, that's something that we're looking at. We were directed by city council to look at, into those efforts, and that's something that we're currently doing.
We'll all volunteer for that committee.
I'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
I have one other question about the, I know the third-story deck got raised quite a few times. So, is that something, though? I mean, it doesn't really affect the density of the project, so is that something that we could recommend being removed?
I suppose that doesn't affect the density. Commissioner Hayes, I suppose that doesn't affect the density, and that may be a recommendation or a requirement that this body can make to the developer, as it's, it doesn't entail living space, it doesn't reduce the density by removing that design feature. It's just an attractive design feature that probably helps with the marketing of the project to potential buyers.
Might make it more palatable for the neighbors.
Okay, are we all out of questions? I mean, this is, this is not an easy one because...
Questions out.
Yeah, I'll entertain any additional comments or emotion or... Bottom line, our, our hands unfortunately are tied so much by the state and its requirements, really, to develop more housing and whether it fits within the character of the neighborhood or not. We're limited in terms of being able to ask them for, for much other than what we see here. I think they've covered just about everything that we've asked or were required to. Dan, it looks like you want to come up and make a comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Dan Ebaum again, Chairman Rosales. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things, a couple of items that have just come up, and let's go to the last one about the rooftop decks. Now, they're not above the third story, at a third-story height. The top of the rails at 25 feet, which is really in line with the second story. It's above that, but it's not above the roof line of the house. And so, they've been designed to integrate into the, the plan of the homes. And they look over each other's yards inside the project. You know, we heard a couple of other items related to parking. You know, each unit's, again, been designed at the full-size two-car garage and driveway and a parking space for the ADU. And we'd gone through the waivers and incentives, and we just talked about that. And one question had come up before about paying fees for this project, or there was a comment, well, the project was always going to pay all the impact fees that are required of any development in Oceanside. Those aren't being waived. And then, of course, we talked about traffic, and I think the traffic information with the project speaks for itself, the minimal amount of traffic added for this project in particular. And Sergio could probably follow up on any cumulative analysis requirements, but there aren't with this kind of a project, so. And I'm happy to answer any other questions while I'm up here.
Great, thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Motion would be that to approve staff's recommendation, namely that we conform issuance of a categorical exemption per CEQA guidelines, Article 19, Section 15332, and approve tentative map T2100004, Development Plan D218, and Density Bonus DB214 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022-P04 with findings and conditions of approval attached to it.
Thank, thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Morrissey.
And I would second that and add that I think this developer, even though it's this Fire Mountain, which is one of our best neighborhoods in the city, I think, too, we, this is like life that's dictated from the state. This is not our desires here. We want to, we want, we would love to have you guys with your 500 people, take that to, take to the state of California and start to do your same thing there, because this is what we have to do. We, we've looked at every legal, it's...
Hey, with all, with all due respect, with all due respect, with all due respect, please. This is no longer a public hearing. Commissioner Balma, go ahead.
And, you know, legally, we've, we've been told by our, our council, we've been told by our city staff that we don't have a legal ground to stand on. If we, if we take off, if we, if we take this path, if we take the path that the city council takes this path, I'm sure there's some kind of a lawsuit thing that they could actually sue per unit $1,000 a day or something. I've heard something crazy like that. It's a very expensive thing that, for a city to take a stand. So, unless you're going to try to foot the bill out there, maybe you, maybe you want to help on that, but you, you can't expect a city to fight the state on something like this. But the people like you guys with your petitions, I thought that was so impressive, that's where you need to start thinking about, is put those, those, that petition, that energy into the state and try to get them to change their mind, because it's not happening here at the city. You can't, we can't do it. We don't have the power. So, I would second the motion and also compliment...
Please, I've, I've asked you several times to let us finish our deliberation up here. It's no longer a public hearing. Please be courteous. Thank you.
I just want to compliment the developer as far as what they've done with this project. I mean, they have followed suit. There is already four houses on this property already that were very small and very small lots, and they've just kind of taken that same idea and patterned it all the way through to the, to the rest of the, the new eight units. And I think that your architectural design was good, too, so I have to compliment you that you did, you could have done something even a lot more, and you didn't. You chose to try to fit it into the Fire Mountain neighborhood the best you could, and I appreciate that, what you've done. So, I know it's hard and sensitive, and it's terrible, and we're, and this is where we are. So, go to the state. Don't vote for your people up there. Vote for somebody new.
So, we have a motion by Vice Chair Morrissey and a second by Commissioner Balma. Any further discussion or comment?
I would just like to say that I don't think any of us here on the planning commission like what the state's doing any more than any of you do.
No.
And we would love to find a way to push back on this. So, any ideas, anything that we as a city could do would be fabulous.
Well, I mean, and just one more comment I know before we all vote, too, is I think, if I remember correctly, when we had this conversation last summer, it was about a $10 million, and maybe Barbara knows, but I think it was a $10 million penalty that the city would automatically get slapped with.
Right.
And we would have to pay for, for denying the project.
So, why don't all the cities get together and rely?
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Morrissey, go ahead.
Well, it sounds like you, you have an option, and that is to go to the city council. And, and so, but we are, you know what? We, we don't necessarily agree with the state.
No.
But, but, but we have a duty to do, and we're going to do it. And you have an option, and you can do that. So, with that said, can we have the vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Balma?
Yes.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Yes.
And I am a yes. C. Planer?
Commissioner Rosales, that's 5-0 in favor of the project.
Thank you.
I have a very high...
A five-minute recess? Just five minutes?
We love the passion. It's good.
We're going to resume the planning commission meeting.
Okay. See, we had, the one thing we could, the one bone we have is the short-term rental.
Item nine is consideration of a tentative map, development plan, and density bonus. Cypress Point subdivision is the project located, it's located in Oceanside. I'm looking for it. Los Arbelitos Boulevard at Aspen Street and Paula Road intersections. Applicant is Concordia Communities. Disclosures, I receive, well, I read this, staff report drove by that area, and I believe we received some email correspondence as well. And then, we also have on the dais a few items that were left for us prior to the meeting. Commissioner Custer, disclosures?
I looked on Google Maps and read the report. Do I need to say that again?
Go ahead, one more time.
Read the report, looked on Google Maps, and I do not recall any emails.
Commissioner Hayes?
Read the reports, familiar with the area, so I drove the site and looked on Google Maps as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma?
Pretty much the same, and I also had an email with the applicant.
And Vice Chair Morrissey?
Reviewed the documents, reviewed the site.
Thank you. Go ahead, Richard.
Good evening, Chair Rosales, Vice Chair Morrissey, members of the planning commission, members of the public in attendance this evening. Richard Greenbauer with the planning division here for the second project, which has density bonus attached to it. It includes a tentative map and development plan for a development of 54 single-family homes. I'm not going to get into a lot of the density bonus and surplus lands act information, because I think a very thorough discussion was just had. Being, you know, the planners, we are the messengers constantly here, so we're constantly under battle. We understand the emotions that exist in the communities out there, and we vet these very seriously as they come through our planning division. With that, I'll give a brief overview of the project. It was dedicated as surplus land by the city. It's a total of 7.38 gross acres, zoned RS, single-family, has always held the zoning of RS. General plan designated is commensurate to that, single-family detached residential, which will provide a total of 54 homes, 1,200 to 1,700 square feet in size. With the surplus land act, 15% of the homes are required to be low-income. That would be eight units here for the surplus lands act. 46 homes would be market rate, and they would be serviced via a single drive in, off Paula Road in an internal loop with central common open space for the residents. In addition, the applicant is proposing a total of 30 guest parking spaces that are located throughout the subdivision of the site. As you can see, the applicant has made a, an effort to move and position the site plan to the west to the extent feasible by putting internal drive aisle as well as the little buffer areas between the single-family homes to the north or to the east there. Here's an overview from the air, which shows the surplus land that was back in, I guess, East 2003. City council declared it surplus land and went out for RFPs on September 25th, 2019, and approved a purchase and sell agreement with Concordia, whose staff and their consultants are available this evening as well and have a presentation. So, I'll limit the amount of my presentation, so we can err on the side of lack of redundancy. And that original approval for purchase and sell in 2019 was to develop the site with 40 single-story detached homes. Subsequent to that, in June of 2020, the city council amended the agreement, allowing to construct single, the requirement for single-story homes and allowing two-story homes on this site. All structures here are proposed at two stories. As I previously stated, I believe, a very thorough discussion on density bonus and the restrictions that, that hold us for, you know, making denials of these projects, very difficult at best to make. So, with that, I'll move over and show the density bonus and the incentives concessions, none are being requested as part of this project, but there are a total of five waivers filling with overall lot size, lot width, setbacks, front yard landscaping, and then retaining walls and plantable walls within the perimeter of the site. The architecture being designed is a farmhouse architectural design, and they bring vats and richness in materials and a multitude of floor plans that shows the board and batten, hardy sideboard, finished materials, as well as good thought-out placement of the garages setback from the main front of the house, so it's not to be your entry of arrival in the garage, but rather the structure itself. With that, there's a combination, three combinations for four plans. So, the four plans that were previously shown will each have three color combinations to break up the monotony throughout the 54-unit subdivision. With that, staff has provided a brief overview of the development standards and where waivers are requested. I've listed those, they're within the staff report, and if you have any questions on those, I'll be available to answer those as well. And with that, a significant amount of public outreach has occurred. An EIR was prepared for this project. We held two scoping meetings to garner public input, and we understand the emotion that's out there. All the professional disciplines at the city have reviewed this project, traffic analysis, stormwater, water quality, and all aspects have been thoroughly vetted, and the environmental impact report has shown that with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that there will not be significant environmental impacts on the site. So, staff's recommendation is to certify the EIR with the MMRP and the findings of fact by adopting the first resolution P05. And then, the second action would be to approve the tentative map, development plan, and request for density bonus by adopting Planning Commission Resolution P06. Staff is available for any questions, and we do have the applicant's team here with a presentation as well, and I can turn that over to them or take any questions you might have at this time.
Questions for Richard? Don't see any, so, yeah, the applicant, if they'd like to come forward and present?
We made it, guys. Thank you, Richard, for that thorough presentation. Good evening, everyone. My name's Arlene Tendick. I'm the community outreach liaison on behalf of Concordia Homes. Happy to be representing our team today to share with you a little bit more about Cypress Point. As Richard mentioned, it's, the project site is located at the end of Paula Road and Los Arbelitos. We're bordered by single-family homes to the east, the San Luis Rey Bike Trail to the west, and 13 acres of open space to the north. One point of clarity, there's been some confusion amongst our neighbors that the whole 20-acre site was contemplated for development several years ago, so that led to some questions for our team. That 13 acres to the north is not part of this project site. It's just the seven acres that we've already talked about. The, the open space is still owned by the city of Oceanside. Our site, however, is zoned residential, and as you heard, was sold to Concordia, or annihilation to Concordia a few years ago. This site is the last remaining parcel within the Los Arbelitos community, so their CCNRs identified this site, this site for future residential. A lot has changed since the 70s, including the designation of this site as surplus land. In 2020, as you know, the city of Oceanside kicked off the general plan update, so this project, we believe, aligns with the goals and the city's vision for its future. It's still in draft form, but also helps get Oceanside a little bit closer to meeting the latest arena allocation. In 2021, Concordia submitted its application, and we got to work, meeting with our neighbors and working with Richard and city staff to refine the plans and address concerns. These four pillars really represent the biggest themes that we heard during our outreach, through this presentation will touch on each of those. As you can see by this chart, 44 units are currently allowed on-site with its existing zoning. With the density bonus, up to 57 are allowed. We believe that 54 units strikes the right balance between what's allowed and, and... and what's currently allowed and what could be allowed through the density bonus. I do think it's important to note Concordia will be building all of the affordable units along with the market rate. That's rare. When it's more convenient to pay the in-lief fee, we're really proud to be able to deliver these eight units along with the market rate. This is a view looking west from the existing neighborhood. We heard a lot from our neighbors about their concerns about how this project might interact with the existing community. So this section shows the separation from 745 Los Arbolitos sits at the north end of the site. The setbacks on site range from about 75 feet to 180 feet. So we maximized those wherever we could. And this view right here shows the view from the south end, about 701 Los Arbolitos. We recognize our responsibility to be good stewards of the land and respectful neighbors. Cypress Point incorporates environmentally conscious measures designed to respect, protect, and preserve existing natural habitats. Project features include enhanced habitat in the open space to the north, several new western sycamore trees, and a six foot mezzanry wall designed to minimize light and noise impacts. In further commitment to minimizing light impacts, there will be no streetlights within the project and proposed light fixtures on the houses would be directed downward and shielded to avoid light spill. And finally, the plant palette and irrigation have been designed to limit the spread of invasive species into the adjacent open space. We worked closely with the city and resource agencies to make sure these features align with habitat preservation and conservation goals for the area. Aside from the new homes, we've received the most questions about circulation and access. We're proposing an extension of Paula Road for the primary vehicular entrance into Cypress Point. At staff's request, we added two stop signs, making the intersection at Paula and Los Arbolitos a four way stop. New sidewalks and landscaped buffers are also included. This section shows the horizontal view of the Paula Road extension. This design adds to community character and provides a nice buffer from our neighbors on Hunter Street to the north. Oh, I'm sorry, to the south. Aspen Street will be gated for emergency vehicle access only. In meetings with our neighbors on Los Arbolitos, especially those closest to Aspen, we heard concerns about possible impacts of streetlights from cars exiting Cypress Point. Those lights shining into their homes. So we worked or we checked with the city fire department to make sure that we could gate this for EVA access only and really address that concern. They also had concerns about people using Los Arbolitos as a cut through or parking on their street. So impacting limited street parking. This is a view of what that fence could look like. We're also including a green space for Cypress Point residents. The location of this green space also serves as a buffer when you are looking west from Aspen. Even though we've opted to close this access for day to day use, we'll still be planting new trees along Aspen Street for the community's benefit. Discussions over security and access were central to our meetings with our neighbors. In response to those conversations, Cypress Point will be a gated community. This list summarizes what we heard throughout our outreach. People shared about illegal motorcycles, off-roading, RVs, homeless people jumping their fence, inconsiderate pet owners utilizing the open space, and other issues stemming from the vacant lot. While some of the questions about hydrology and biology were answered through the SEQA process, a lot of what we heard was very unique and specific to people just living adjacent to the site. Residents had a variety of ways to share their thoughts with us. We began community outreach in February of 21 with the launch of a community informational website. We sent an introductory letter to nearly 1,000 surrounding homeowners and interested parties. The letter also had an invitation to a virtual information meeting. Prior to the meeting, a reminder was left on the doors of homes in the immediate neighborhood. Roughly 24 people attended the virtual info meeting and recording of the meeting was made available afterwards on the website. The first scoping meeting was held on May 4th. At the time, the city had just gone back to in-person public meetings, so we also added a virtual option so more people could participate. We were made aware that some residents didn't receive the NOP in time for the May 4th meeting, so we opted to extend the scoping period an additional 30 days. A new notice was sent to the community and a second scoping meeting was held in June. During the public circulation period, we sent a project update letter to the community and also hosted an open house. In addition to these formal opportunities, we also met one-on-one and in small groups with neighbors. There are some familiar faces here, so thank you to everyone for watching online and here in the chambers for their feedback and participation. We've alluded to our responsiveness throughout this presentation, but just to summarize, I wanted to go over specifically what we did to address neighbor concerns. Initially, Concordia had proposed an ungated community with a public landscaped trail. This trail was designed to connect the existing community with the open space to the north. It would have also given them access to our own new park. We were surprised to hear that that was not a welcome addition to the committee, to the community, just for the access and security reasons that I mentioned earlier. People, what they wanted though, was for us to try and incorporate more parking and also solutions to the security issues I've already talked about. Well, we believe this new community will help dispel most of the undesirable activity taking place on the site. This, the gated, gating the community allows us to funnel pedestrian traffic along the western boundary of the site. You can see that dashed yellow line clearly. This route also includes narrower pinch points indicated there in the orange, which will also effectively reduce the illegal motorcycle and off-roading activity that's currently happening on the site, which has also been a concern of the sheriff's department. As previously referenced, Aspen Street will be gated. Even though we already exceeded the city's parking requirements, we did find a way to add eight additional guest spaces. They replaced the trail. You can see them right here with the orange. And lastly, a new six foot fence with screening hedges will be constructed along the eastern property line to address concerns over privacy. We know we can't make everyone happy, but these changes to the plan are a direct reflection of the conversations we've had with the people who participated in the process with us. In conclusion, we want to thank city staff again for their collaboration. We believe our efforts resulted in a project that honors the surrounding community character and recognizes changing community, environmental, and economic needs. Cypress Point aligns with city goals for providing new workforce housing, including 15% onsite affordable housing, which complies with the site's existing residential zoning and satisfies surplus lands act and state density bonus requirements. This project avoids impacts to our neighbors and the environment through generous setbacks on landscape buffers and project features which limit light and noise impacts on the adjacent habitat. We respectfully ask that you approve Cypress Point today. Members of our team are available for questions and we thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions. Any slips for speakers or feedback from the audience?
Chair Rosales, I believe we have seven speaker slips for this item.
Okay, great. Let's call them up.
Okay. First speaker is Gary Craft, followed by Alan Kolfman and Peggy Riley. Gary, please come up to the podium.
Members of the Planning Commission, ladies and gentlemen, based off of what I heard of the last presentation, it doesn't matter what I say up here because you guys are going to say yes anyways. And I understand your position and that's really quite terrible and unfortunate. That's why we're already taking the steps needed to get the signatures to oppose this at the city council. Planning. We've already gotten the required amount, so we will be doing that soon. But just so that it's on record, I have a few points here that I wanted to point out and why this development should not go through. First, thing is first. We weren't notified before this project decided to follow through. Nobody in the community was. And granted, I'm a new, I'm a new member of the community. I moved in in 2020. The property, I believe, in question was noted as being sold on the, in 2019 or 2020, I can't remember. But furthermore, they had their scoping committee meetings, but those meetings, several of them were moved and nobody in the community was notified of this. And so we're not sure what happened there. But several of us didn't receive the communications. I personally, I did receive one, but there are several members in the community that are present tonight that did not. San Luis Rey is one of the most densest areas in Oceanside. We have several people and several houses and housing in the area, not to mention the traffic. Traffic was one of the things that's been brought up here countless number of times. This, this community being added is a total of 796.5 trips. In addition, based off of the other Planning Commission report that said for eight homes, right? Eight homes at 118 extra trips. They allotted for 200 trips. There's 700, almost 800 more trips based on the amount of homes that were, that they're trying to add, that the developers are trying to add. We all know these aren't going to be affordable homes. They're two story homes. They're not going to be affordable, not to mention it's going to impede on my, my neighbors that live right up against that fence line there. They're like an extra 20 feet high. Come on, really? Furthermore, I remember hearing somewhere in this report that, or in the discussion tonight, that there needs to be a direct objection to the project. And there was that. There was that in Appendix D Cultural Service, Cultural Resources Survey Report. And I know I'm running out of time. Section 6 Management Consideration Recommendations, specifically 6.2 Recommendations. The Cypress Point will result in direct impacts to Site CP Temp 1. Therefore, in keeping with the city's guidelines and SEQA, requirements to identify resources and evaluate potential impacts on Phase 2 Testing and Significance Impact Evaluation Program is recommended. Also, there's a master plan by the city of Oceanside and for Parks and Recreation. This was looked at as part of that plan and a dirt path, which the city is under, by the way, on their, the need for paths and recreation. So I'm going to ask that you guys don't vote because you reserve that right as commissioners. You don't have to take up initiative. You don't have to. Nobody has to send a motion tonight. Don't. We don't want this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Alan Kolfman, followed by Peggy Riley and Eric.
Hi, I'm Alan Kolfman. I have lived in that neighborhood for 40 years and witnessed most of that Los Arbolitos development take place. And generally, I like this project. Partly because it's housing and Oceanside desperately needs housing. We all complain, all hear all the time about price of housing. Our own kids can't afford to live in the city they grew up in. This is only 54 units, but 54 units helps. I don't think that affordable housing is a complex issue. There isn't any singular answer to it. But supply is, is an important part of that. I also like, I think it fits well with the whole Los Arbolitos plan. These are single family homes on single family lots. No zero lot line, no condominiums. They're just like all the homes north of Paula, single family homes on single family lots. The homes are exactly the same size as all the other houses built north of Paula. I think they fit in pretty, pretty well. They're smaller lots because that's, that's the case these days. I like that because as I look around Oceanside, what I mostly see are extremely dense condominium projects, three stories high, 300 of them and maybe 13 single family houses thrown in. This is all single family homes. When I consider what the likely, something will be built there. When I consider what the likelihoods are of, of the alternatives, I like this a lot. My third reason is I think these developers went to some lengths to try to mitigate any impact they may be. These homes are set back from their neighbors far more than any other homes in this entire community. There's guest parking here. There isn't anywhere else. It's all street parking everywhere else in this, in this community. I think they went to some lengths to try to make this work. And in general way, at least, I speak in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Peggy Riley, followed by Eric Bruvold and Tyler Martin. Peggy?
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Peggy Riley and I live at 721 Los Arbolitos Boulevard. I bought my view home 33 years ago and I'm now retired and I'm home all day. I thought, I bought the place for peace and serenity and now I'm trying to enjoy it and it will be ruined by two story homes that I have no place in our neighborhood. I paid for this view for more than three decades and I feel that the city is taking this away from me and my two dozen neighbors who have done the same. We've all been there close to 30 years or more. Living and walking behind my house every day, I've come across all different species of animals, a lot of them endangered, like the arroyo toad, the Stevens kangaroo rat and that has been on my patio. I had a rufous hummingbird living on my patio this past summer. We average three blue herons living on the back property every year, one which just paid me a visit last week in front of my window. We also have the healthiest coyotes in all of Oceanside because of the squirrels and rabbits. They can eat from our vibrant wildlife that's behind our house, our houses. Building so close to the river, I feel, is irresponsible in terms of the wildlife. There's a buffer for animals. There's room for the San Luis Rey Walking Trail that's supposed to start at the beach and go all the way to the 15 freeway per the maps with Parks and Recs. Parks and Recs maps, which are new, do not show houses on that property. Shows a walking trail. And Bonsall's already finished their part of the walking trail. We haven't connected ours from the beach to Bonsall. I would like to be able to walk from the beach to the 15 and I definitely don't want to look at two, two story homes that are going to be directly behind my house and my neighbors also. We bought on the outskirts of the neighborhood because we wanted a view lot. And when I bought my house, I went to the city and they said, no, there will be no building behind your house. So I went ahead and purchased my home 33 years ago. With the beautiful wildlife, there also comes potential from danger from brush fires. One time, a fire started in the riverbed and jumped into the field and burnt my back fence. The new houses would be 30 feet away from that riverbed with no buffer from the fire. I can't get fire insurance except through the state. These new homeowners will face the same issues I have of getting a decent policy. Mine was canceled three years ago. I have to go through the state. So how are they going to sell homes to people when they can't get homeowners insurance policy except through the state? And I can't count how many times I've packed up enough stuff for days and just drove off praying that the fires didn't burn my house down because we do have an average of about five fires in that area in the riverbed from the homeless people.
Ma'am, your time is up.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Next speaker is Eric, followed by Tyler Martin and Marseille Puket.
Good evening, Chairman. Eric Bruvold, for the record, I'm the CEO of the San Diego North Economic Development Council. And the number one issue impacting our economic competitiveness in North County is clearly the lack of housing. And I want to ask the commission for just a second, both maybe thinking about the last item and this item right now, to take one step back and take a look at the ratio of jobs that have been created, net new jobs in Oceanside compared to the amount of housing that we've created. Because in the end, a job is, a house is where a job goes to sleep at night. Between 2013 and 2020, there were a net 6,977 jobs added in Oceanside. That's great economic development. And this commission and the city council have worked hard to try and grow a more competitive economy in Oceanside along as well as the other four cities on the 78 corridor. But in that same seven years, the city of Oceanside only added 1,300 housing, houses. And so 5.2 jobs chased every one new house. And I know that the density bonus is controversial. I know that it's easy to look at the state. But statewide, that is a huge issue. And that's, those jobs don't go to the Starship Enterprise at night. Scotty doesn't beam them up. They get on the 78 and the 76, they drive to the 15 and they go to. They get on the 78 and the 76, they drive to the 15 and they go to Temet, Temecula, Medefi and Murrieta. So that traffic is still there. It's just traveling 30, 40, 50 miles and adding to the environmental challenges the state has. And so I would urge the Commission on this project and others to remember that ratio. We've done a great job in this region and for good reason, and benefiting a lot of people that speak at this Commission by having a robust economy that creates tax benefit and creates upward economic development or economic opportunity because of increased wages. But we've got to balance that with housing. And we cannot continue to have a ratio of more than five jobs chasing every one new house. Thank you very much and I wish you well and hopefully the meeting going in a reasonable hour tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah. Next speaker is Tyler Martin, followed by Mayor Puckett and Johnny and Julie. Tyler?
Well, by now, good night, Planning Commission. Thank you, Chairman Rosales. Commissioners, thank you. And staff, thank you for your time putting this together. My name is Tyler Martin and I'm trying to buy a house. And I'm willing to put in an offer on this community. And aside from a place to raise my family, I get to set roots in Oceanside and become an active civic member because I'm making a commitment to this community. I'll no longer be a renter. I grew up in the Midwest where everyone gets a home for $40,000. I had a dog that I loved and a yard that he could run in. And I guess to be in Oceanside, you've got to be a millionaire to have that. This site was always planned for development. It's always been planned for development. This developer chose to offer the 15% affordable units, real homes versus playing, taking an easy way out and paying the fee. I would feel safe from fire living in this community after reviewing the plans and I want you to approve it because we've got to keep our kids here. And this isn't about rental income. This isn't about a developer making money. This developer is going to sell these homes and the equity is going to be in our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Sorry if I butchered his name. Is it Mark? Mark? Mark Puckett? Yeah. Followed by Johnny and Julie. Mark, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Mark Puckett from 3928 Arista Way. I live just down the street from the development this proposed. I've lived in a lot of places. Long Beach, California, Paris, France, Irvine, California, New York, New York. I came back to Long Beach when the family started to grow and I moved to Vista when it kept growing. I moved here in 2004 as the family shrank. I guess that's my way of saying that I've seen some plans that work and some that don't. I won't name winners or losers. The point is that you now have a chance to join the losers by making a terrible mistake. This mistake will follow decades of instances when city or developers backed away from decisions to develop this property. This very property, it was always declined for good reasons. Best interest of the, of the city and the residents. First for flooding risks, more recently for fire risks. I'm sorry, the formula. I'd like to hear his opinion. And always at the risk of the neighbors because God knows, we're against them. And we have always been for the 30 years since this place started to be proposed. So take a deep breath, Commissioners, especially any new Commissioners here. What, why is this project being slipped through now? Did the Pla- Planning Commission just hunt? Let me give you some history. This particular deal was conserved in email under COVID as an unsolicited bid so it escaped public notices that would have attracted the residents' knives. The sale was approved in a private council meeting. Later, despite the best efforts of Mayor Sanchez, to swap the property for better property or for a better, more suitable site, the City Council refused. The very first residence official notification was received by the lucky residents a couple of days after the meeting was supposed, it was supposed to announce. We sent the messages from Chicago the night before the meeting, expecting them to arrive. Now, this Cypress project is, EIR is very interesting. It appears to sell part of your very prestigious San Luis Rey River Trail, River Bike Trail, if you approve this. It certainly gives up any real hope of Oceanside's portion of San Luis Rey River Park running through from the ocean to Morro Hills. This development includes, this is interesting, a brand-new substandard sewer system. The city wouldn't build this, but it will accept it if it's fait accompli. The two-story homes will tower over neighborhood of one-story homes even more so when the houses are to be built at the flood plain, which is several feet higher than the existing neighbor's home. Is this flood thy neighbor policy an official city policy? This open space, riverbank in particular, has been used by hundreds of residents every day for hundreds of years. You can see from the satellite photos with the pass up there.
Sir, can I?
Don't blow it now.
Thank you.
Last speaker here is Johnny and Julie Mendez.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Johnny Mendez. I'm speaking for my wife and I. We live at the northernmost point of the development. First off, we'd like to say that although at first we were, weren't too excited that the property was going to be developed to our west, but at first it was with reluctance. We began to talk more and more about the open area. Working with Jeb, Don and Arlene has not been a bad, but it's been more informative than anything else. The developers from Cypress Point Project began to listen to our openness and regarding to the development more to our concerns. They made more of an effort to reach out to the community we did in our part. They held meetings and have made themselves available for a one-on-one conversation. They even came over to our house so we can have a walkthrough from our yard and a viewpoint from our area. They would take the time to develop and also entertain our questions in regards to any concerns for safety and in concerns for the community. Arlene and Jeb came over to our house and we walked through the property outside of our fence in line and discussed the detailed plans so that we could be easier to visualize of what was the planning to be built on the other side of our fence. We both appreciate that the developer, in our opinion, and they had listened to the community and has tried to implement the changes that they could. We believe that this housing is going to be somewhat just an improvement to our community and to the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other sleep? That's it? Anybody else in the audience didn't turn in a speaker slip and would like to come forward before we close the public hearing? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and go to discussion. Richard, where are you? There you are. If you could touch on traffic mitigation, talk about the SEQA, I guess, and particularly traffic and fire.
Chair Rosales, yes, regarding traffic, well, we do have our environmental consultant here as well, but all analysis were prepared, vetted through our traffic department as well as our fire department, and there were no objectional life safety issues that came up. The requirement was for two, or was it two stop signs? But they decided at the, you know, right before this meeting, traffic would, requested that the developer would put in a four-way stop and they agreed to that prior to getting here. So that's why they went and implemented it on their plans. If there's anything specific in the traffic on there, we do have the environmental consultant, Vanessa Curry here.
No, I think, I don't know, some others jump in. Any other Commissioners questions on the development or SEQA or anything?
I was just trying to, on the last project, we had the short-term rental line in here. Is that also on this one? I couldn't find it.
No, it looks like an error was taken out because we are implementing that on all density bonus projects throughout the city, as Sergio had alluded to, until the ordinance gets codified. We will be reading that into the record. Hopefully it doesn't throw you backwards.
Good. All right. Thank you.
So we'll put the same, the same, if, whatever the motion is, if there's a motion to approve, then we would ask that that condition be placed in there, that the units not rent for less than 30 days.
Thank you. And there was a comment made about this property, a promise. I don't know if that was the term used, a promise that it would never be developed by a resident who took advantage of that and bought her house in that area. Can you tell us about that?
I cannot speak to hearsay, the fact that the City Council took three actions on this parcel to declare the surplus lands and then enter into a purchase and sell agreement states that, that, that was vetted 2003, so almost 20 years ago.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Hayes?
It sounded like it used to be limited to one story and then it was changed to two-story and it sounded like that was one of the concerns. Is that true?
That is correct. And that was the, the third action item in 2020 where they amended the document to allow two stories so it would pencil.
I have a question.
Commissioner Custer.
So is this going to interfere with the bike path?
No, there will be no interference with the current bike path and the operations there. There is a masonry wall that will keep people out of the habitat area as well as the habitat to the north there, which they'll be restoring.
That was my question about the bike trail, so. Thank you.
Hey, excuse me, we're, again, we're not in the public hearing anymore. You can ask your question maybe afterwards. We look tired.
We are tired.
I'll just throw that out there. Any other questions? Thank you for your input. Our public hearing is closed.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, that's good.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I make a motion that we agree with staff. We certify the EIR and associated findings of fact along with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022-P05 and approved tentative map T21-1, Development Plan D21-1, and request for density bonus DB21-1 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022-P06 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
City Attorney, do we need two separate motions, one for the SEQA and then one for the development plan? Or can they be captured in one, a single motion?
I think they can be captured in one single motion.
Chair Rosales, we'd like to read in the condition of approval that's been, being added.
Go ahead.
Respect to the short-term rental. So add a condition to the planning conditions that reads, "All units proposed as part of this project shall be rented for no less than 30 days."
Right.
Thank you. So we have a motion as proposed by staff that captures both the certification of the EIR and the development plan with the added information about short-term rentals.
I would second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Valma?
Yes.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Yes.
And I am a yes. City Planner?
Let the record show that that, that motion passes 5-0 in favor of the project.
Thank you. We have one last item of public hearing tonight. That would be consideration of a recommendation to the City Council for a general plan amendment, zone amendment and tentative parcel map and historic permit to change the general land, general plan land use and zoning at the northwest corner of Douglas Drive and Mission Avenue. Disclosures, staff report, and I know where the location is. Commissioner Custer, disclosures?
Read the staff report and I know the site well. I drove by it.
Commissioner Hayes?
This is in my backyard, so I drive by the site almost every day. I know the site well.
Valma?
I also drive by the site a lot and I read the staff report.
And Vice Chair Morrissey? Ms. Anders, welcome.
Good evening. Last but not least, I, my name is Patty Anders and I will be presenting the Mission Avenue and Douglas Drive General Plan Amendment Project. The project's site is located at the northwest corner of Mission Avenue and Douglas Drive and is located within the Mission-San Luis Rey Historic District, but is located outside of the historic core. The site is located within the San Luis Rey Neighborhood Planning Area. The project is, is not proposing any new development, site improvements or demolition and therefore the project will not result in any physical changes, but is more of a policy and mapping change. The project before you is requesting a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of the service station parcel only from medium-density A residential to special commercial, which allows visitors serving commercial uses and facilities such as a service station. It's also to allow a zone amendment to change the service station zoning only from medium-density residential A with a senior mobile home overlay to special commercial district. A tentative parcel map to allow the site to be subdivided into two parcels, so the existing service station and the existing mobile home park would have separate legal parcels. And lastly, a historic permit to allow a zone change and tentative parcel map within the historic district. The property, as I mentioned, consists of a mobile home park and service station with automobile repair services and associated parking. There's also a, an existing five-foot brick screen wall separating the two uses that is shown in the next slide. The proposed tentative parcel map would allow the subdivision of the 14.31-acre site to create the two legal parcels as shown and read on this slide. The mobile home park and the service station would therefore result in two separate legal parcels. The tentative parcel map would allow the mobile home park to have 13.73 acres and the service station would result in .58 acres. Both existing accesses to both uses would remain unchanged. The project conforms with the general plan, special commercial land use designation, and it actually removes a land use inconsistency. The project applies a commercial zone on a legally established commercial use for parcel two, the service station, and the parcels both meet the lot size requirements of Article 10 Residential District and Article 11 Commercial District. The tentative parcel map, the project's tentative parcel map is consistent with the city's subdivision ordinance and the historic permit is required due to the site being within the historic district. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission by motion confirm issuance of a SEQA exemption per SEQA Guideline, Section 15061-B3, under the common sense exemption, and approve the general plan amendment, GPA 20-2, zone amendment, ZA 20-7, tentative parcel map 20-4, and the historic permit, H20-1, by adopting the Planning Commission Resolution 2022-P-7, with the findings and conditions of approval attached herein. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Anders? You were that thorough, so we have no questions.
This was, I think, your easiest one.
Yeah.
And you're just the true author.
This is the softball one. Any slips from the public to speak?
Chair, Chair Rosales, we have no slips on this item.
I see one member of the audience care to speak on this item or you just?
I represent the public.
Oh, great. Okay. So would you like to make a presentation or any, answer any questions?
Do we have any questions?
I don't know. We have any questions? I think, I think we're okay.
This one is easy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah. Great job.
Good presentation.
Great presentation.
Ended perfectly.
Okay, so the stream seems pretty straightforward. It's kind of a cleanup, make it right sort of thing. So I don't have any questions. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Good, I don't have to say anything. A motion to approve this, the recommend, to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution 22PO7, recommending Senate Council approve general map amendment GPA 200002, zone amendment ZA 200007, tentative parcel map P20004, and historic permit H200001 to change the general plan use and zoning designation of the existing service station and to subdivide the existing mobile home park and service station into two separate parcels.
Great. Thank you for that motion by Commissioner Custer, and I think we, we had an early second from Commissioner Hayes. Any other discussion? If not, let's vote. Commissioner Custer, you made the motion. Are you approve?
I approve, yes.
Hayes? Commissioner Valma?
I approve, and I also wanted to ask staff, why is there always so many zeros in some of these things?
Oh, that's a good question.
Too many zeros. Sometimes it's only two zeros, and this one has, there are like 10 zeros.
I approve, yes.
And Vice Chair Morrissey?
I approve.
Also approval from me. City Planner?
Chair Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes 5-0 in favor of the project.
Thank you. And as I indicated earlier, items 11, 12, and 13 are being continued for till March 28th. So that'll bring us to appeal a city planner determination, and I see the agenda shows none and nothing on the discussion item. So we'll go to city planner, commissioner reports. I don't think I want to add anything other than Louise and I are interviewing on Wednesday to determine if we get reappointed to the commission. If we don't, then it's been a fun ride, and we will miss most of this except for these long nights like tonight. But no, it's been fun. We'll see what happens on Wednesday. Other than that, Vice Chair Morrissey, any report?
No, but Sergio, thank you for, you know, you being there and a great job tonight.
Yep. Commissioner Valma?
I second the Sergio comment.
And I can third that. I can just imagine how many discussions all of you have had over the last month or so leading up to this.
Yeah. It's, it's been a trial just to get here, right?
Yeah, right.
Good job.
Commissioner Custer?
Well, I do have a question, a couple of questions. One is, is there a ratio, so when they have affordable housing units put into these, and one's very low income and one's low income? So is there, there must be a formula or a ratio on the price of the house?
Yeah. Commissioner Custer, that is a good question. There is a ratio on what you can sell it for, and I'm not intimately familiar with it. HCD does publish some guidelines on, on the affordability of what the sales price can be for these homes that are for sale, and even they dictate how much rent they can be charged. As recently during the meeting, our director of housing, because we, that's a question we get often, the director of housing shared with me that they had posted that, the HCD guidelines to the Neighborhood Services website, because we do get asked that question often. And again, I don't know the formula exactly, but there is a formula by which it takes into account area median income and median sales price, and it, there's a maximum percentage on which those homes could be sold and/or rented.
Okay. All right. I'll talk about that. Thank you.
The one item we hang on to then is seven. Don't, don't dispose of this, correct?
Do we, do you want to hang on to any of our items?
That would be fantastic if you could hold on some.
Right.
I rummage through the trash behind me and find my number seven.
If there's something you're missing, just let us know. We'll replace it. It's no big deal.
It'll be on the website, too.
Okay. So city planner, again, well job, job well done. Anything to report tonight?
Just a few items, and thank you for the compliments. I appreciate it. It was, I really appreciate your service and dedication to the city. We know it's not easy to give up your free time to come and sit through and listen to all this. I thank you so much. So as you mentioned, Chair Rosales, there is a workshop on Wednesday, March 16th, for appointments to the Planning Commission. Also that evening, there is a workshop on the Southmore Hills Community Plan.
Right.
So we encourage your participation if you can make it.
Which, which one night is that?
That is on Wednesday, March 16th, beginning at 6:00 in this room here. On March 28th, we have the four items that were previously advertised for this meeting, which would be the 1727 South Pacific Street remodel, the revetment work at the, between the 900,000 block of South Pacific Street, a zone, zoning ordinance amendment with respect to our home occupation ordinance, and there will be an item that presents to this body the general plan update alternatives on which way we're going to go with the general plan. And then finally, on April 6th, that same item, the general plan update alternatives will be presented to the city council with a recommendation from this body. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anything from the city attorney?
Nothing, nothing to add, except, you know, again, my thanks, as Sergio said, to all of you for your continued service, and, and I hope this won't be the last time we see you and Louise on the.
Thank you. Here, here, and with that, we're adjourned.